Okay. Great, thanks very much. I'm going to call this public hearing to order then. Can we have the roll call, please? Clerk?
Yes, Chair Stewart and Mayor Stewart in the chair. Councillor Carr here. Councillor De Genova is absent. Councillor Frye.
Here.
Councillor Swanson.
Here.
Councillor Hardwick is absent this evening. Councillor Weeb.
Here.
Councillor Boyle.
Chris.
Councillor Dominado is not in the chamber. Councillor Bly will be absent this evening. Councillor Kirby Young. You have form.
Thank you very much. Before we begin, I have a few reminders. Speakers have up to five minutes to make their comments and should limit their comments to the merits of the report being considered. And if you kind of stray off course, I'll nudge you a little bit to move over back to the topic. Speakers should also state whether they are support or opposed to the recommendations. Speakers may only speak once and additional comments can always be sent in writing to publichearing@vancouver.ca. Those speaking on behalf of three or more persons or three or more organizations will have up to eight minutes to speak. The person or representative of the organization must also be present, identified, and must not be speakers themselves. Finally, if council does not conclude hearing from all speakers this evening, we'll recess and reconvene the meeting on Thursday, September 19th at 6:00 PM here in council chambers. And just to remember, a reminder, this is a reconvened meeting, so we kind of do away with a bunch of the things at the beginning. But clerk, maybe we can just, are we going to reread the application again, just so people know? Sorry, I caught you unawares there, but...
In regards to CD1 rezoning, 1535 1557 Grant Street, the following correspondence has been received since referral to public hearing and prior to the close of the speakers' list and receipt of public comments. Eighty-two pieces of correspondence in support and eighty-six pieces of correspondence in opposition. This represents all correspondence received since 5:00 PM today.
Thanks so much. And just a reminder to folks that are here tonight and watching online is that we did have the presentation from staff and a bunch of questions and things to staff and the applicant. And now we're just finishing off those people who have spoken or who have signed up from the public to speak to this. So we'll be starting with peer Daniel Kraus, if he's here. He kind of got halfway through his presentation, if you were here last time, so I just wanted to give him the opportunity to finish. And I don't see him here. Okay, I got the handshake. Great, thanks very much. We have number 24 Jared Levitin? Levitin? I don't know if I got it right? Levitin, okay.
Great, thank you. So, thank you. Hi, I'm a resident of Vancouver 21 years and very pleased to see and grateful for all the time and attention that you guys give these projects. I think it's fantastic and it's good to see. It's my first time. I was here for the previous one and just missed it by a few minutes, so. I'm an entrepreneur and I'm for the development, in support of the development. I've started two businesses over the past 12 years and we employ over 150 people in the tech business in Vancouver. And, you know, these are good people. They have young families. They are, you know, they're software engineers and developers. And, you know, we need these people and we need more of these people in our city as, you know, as we continue to grow our business. And we have a thirst for these people. And it's very difficult for these people to find places to buy in the city because it's just very expensive. And rental properties are their best option, but there's just not a lot of those. Now, you know, in a different sort of opinion to a lot of people that have spoken before, 95% of these people earn above their threshold of $75,000. Right? So, and these people can afford this housing. This is important for the city. This is important for businesses in the tech world. And we need these rental properties. So I'm just here to, you know, suggest to the council that this is important from a different point of view. Right? And I know we need, as a city, affordable housing, but this is affordable to our team, to our employees. So, thank you very much.
Thanks for coming in. And I don't see any questions for you, so that'll be it for this evening. Thanks for giving us your opinion. Stuart Smith. Oh, don't need to run, it's okay. Hello, Mr. Smith.
Hi, everyone.
Just get set up there, whenever you're ready to go, I'm letting you...
All right. Welcome back, everyone. It's been a while. I hope you had a great summer. My name is Stuart Smith. I'm on the board of Abundant Housing Vancouver. I'm here to speak in support. Before I get started, I'd like to remind everyone of all the people who aren't in the room today. This is a reasonably well-attended public hearing, some decent volume of feedback, but we should remember that most people don't even know what zoning is, what abundant housing does events. And I tell people that it's illegal to put an apartment on a quiet street, they're gobsmacked while those people aren't in the room today. So we should remember that. We're a big region and a big city and people need a place to live. So, if we put that in context, we've got, what, 86 on each side here? That's 170 out of 2.5 million in the region. That's great, but that doesn't mean that this is that contentious with most people. There's one thing that I'm not in favor of, and that's displacement. But we know how to prevent displacement. Displacement is a policy choice. And every time we choose to not build in Chauncey and not build on owner-occupied RS land, we are choosing displacement like this. So I would much prefer that this was located in Chauncey or West Point Gray or any owner-occupied RS land that doesn't already have tenants. Unfortunately, that's not the choice we face today. In the public comments at the last session, I heard a lot of people using the word "family neighborhood." It seems to have a long history of saying that people who live in apartments are not families or are not worthy of living among families. And I'd like to ask the question, is Grandview Woodlands a family neighborhood? Because if I think about it, a family neighborhood is one that makes room for its own children so that they can live near their family, their friends, their school, and jobs. A family neighborhood is a neighborhood that makes room for low-income households and doesn't push them out and lets them live close to jobs where they can seek opportunity. A family neighborhood is one that makes room for new Canadians. It makes room for grandparents to downsize if they want to. And it makes room for people choosing voluntarily smaller household sizes. I would argue that Grandview Woodland was a family neighborhood perhaps 20 or 25 years ago, and it can be again, but it will take reform. In the last 20 years, the population of Grandview Woodlands has gone down by 40 people, so it hasn't grown at all, while the rest of the region has gone up. So that means that there's some exclusion going on. And in that time, though, the population's not been static. 6,000 low-income people were booted out and 6,000 high-income people came in. So it's a one-for-one replacement, and that's what we get when we don't build housing. The higher-income people just take over the existing housing. I live in rental housing. My building is for sale. One of the best things about buildings like these is that they reduce the pool of tenants that my landlord will be looking for when my building is sold. So, if we want to fix Grandview Woodland, if we want to make it a family neighborhood again, we need room inside of Grandview Woodland for all these uses. And we need significant zone capacity outside Grandview Woodlands to take the pressure off such a centrally-located neighborhood with lots of transit. A few other points. We hear about affordability. Of course, everyone wants their rent to go down. I want my rent to go down. But let's be clear about what's happening in Grandview Woodlands. I went on Craigslist today and houses nearby are 1.5 million to 2.5 million. I heard a speaker last week say that the people in this building will be upper-class. There is nothing more upper-class than being able to afford land in Vancouver. So the idea that people who live in a rental apartment and have no land are a higher class of people than the people who own the land, I think, is absurd. Finally, I spent a bit of time reading the comments. I probably shouldn't have. That's a good metric to use on the internet. It's probably a good metric to use at public hearings, but I'd like to share some words that I brainstormed about how I feel about my rental apartment building. It was built in 1912. Things that I like about my building. It's above ground. It's bright. It's safe. It's warm. It's cool. It's dry. It's a refuge. It's a launchpad. It's fun. It's kind. It's neighborly. It's protected. It's sheltered. Educational, entertaining, supportive, convenient home. It's comfortable. It's snug, stable, secure, walkable, sustainable. It's quiet, classic, community, livable, visitable, sought-after, inclusive, and attainable. And I thought, that's a nice little list of fun words. I wonder how the neighborhood looks at apartment buildings? And so I read the comments and I heard "monstrosity," "blight," "eyesore," "dangerous," "dumping ground," "will cause my exodus," "out of place," "barrier to traffic noise," "jammed in," "ill-fitting," "absurd," "looming," "erupting like a bad blister," "doesn't belong near residents," "belongs on a busy road," "inappropriate," "out of scale," "unsuitable," "future disaster." It's incredibly offensive as an apartment renter to hear that the kind of housing that I might live in one day is erupting like a bad blister. And I'm tired of hearing of it, and I wonder why do I devote so much time to this? So, renters in Vancouver want to stay. We want to make Vancouver our home. We want to keep working here and contribute, and we want to live above ground. So please, let's approve more projects like this. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. No questions, so thanks again for coming in this evening. We have Andrea Lum, 26; Owen Brady, 27; David Hutniak, 28. Andrea Lum? Great, okay. Thanks for coming tonight. And just let you get settled there and we'll... And just a reminder, we're talking about this project on Grant Street. Okay, take your time. It's okay. Just let me know when you're ready and we'll start you up. Ready to go? Okay. Please go ahead.
So, I'm speaking tonight as a resident of Grandview Woodland. You've seen me before. My family's been there for five generations. And funny enough, the house is exactly on that block on the side of Kitchener. So, I did take some photos and I'm just wondering if it's possible at all to...
We'll try to get them up in the five minutes. The clerk will assist you here. Perhaps you can just send them along to us by email? Would that be a better solution? Publichearing@vancouver.ca, I guess?
To tell you the truth, I would love it if the mayor and council would actually do a tour of this particular block because it is going to set a precedent. And the fact that developers are trying to put these kind of five, six-story buildings in places that, if you would see by the photos, are so inappropriate. If you were even to propose such a building in South Fraser, where there are individual homes, and they're not even as old as these character homes, they don't even look like character, if you were to propose it in Kitchellana, where there are individual homes, everybody would just, you know, guffaw at you seriously. And yet, it's being proposed in a place that is extremely vulnerable. Certainly, this building is not sustainable, bringing like 300 people onto a block or, you know, 150 people onto a block that at the most should be able to incorporate maybe another 50 people, and even that is stretching it? If I can talk to you about gentrification, seeing for five generations, my family just seeing everything changing like that, do you know 16 years ago, a professional outreach community health center told me that there were 32 African nations' people living in our neighborhood? That doesn't mean 32 political countries. It means perhaps in one country drawn up normally by Britain, you know, when they're ceding their sovereignty, you know, they might have three different peoples in that country. So 32 different African nations, they are no longer living there. You know, the Cambodians are not living there. Like, so many people had to leave because it's already been gentrified. And I appreciate the women, any of the speakers who came, you know, on, I think it was their last Wednesday, about how they want to save their homes and make this sustainable. But honestly, that's the wave that actually pushed out these people. And everybody wants to live on the drive because of its character. You know, people are very fluid there. It's so colorful because people have come from so many different backgrounds. And everybody talks to each other. And when these people move in, they don't mingle. Sorry to say, they do not mingle. They don't even send their kids to the local schools. So these schools are on the chopping block, literally Britannia's on the chopping block because the enrollment's just down to like, what, 95% or so? The point is, they chauffeur their kids back to their neighborhoods where they came from and to go to those schools. Do you know what I mean? So, what's the, you know, what's the win here? Right? We're talking about the people who've been there since the beginning as well as, you know, people who are coming in. Let's make it sustainable. And the photos that I sent, the second photo shows a building across the street that is respectful. You know, it's got several apartment buildings in it, so great for density, but it like fits in and doesn't put like, you know, over 150 people on one block.
I'm just going to interrupt you there. So you've got about 30 seconds left, but you do have a couple of questions from councillors.
Thank you so much. And so, that said, I also want to, I'm the person sending you all this stuff about 5G Wi-Fi.
We're actually just going to stick on this topic and we're happy to read your other correspondence.
No, no, because that's the kind of building that telecom would partner with to put those antenna on, which would fry all of us, which hurts all of your cell membranes. Some of us are just more cognizant of it than others.
Okay, thank you very much. And you've got councillor De Genova with questions? Please go ahead.
Thank you very much. Just some of the statements that you made about schools not being needed in the neighborhood because you had said that schools aren't needed in this neighborhood?
No, I didn't say that.
Oh, because, okay.
I said, people who are able to afford to live in buildings like that, which has already happened, the gentrification, they do not send their kids to the local schools, especially the closest one is Britannia. There's also another one down the street, Woodlands. They don't send their kids there. They chauffeur them to the schools where they came from. So therefore, the enrollment goes down because the housing gets taken up by people who are not schooling their kids in the neighborhood. I'm talking about that class of income of people.
Okay, and the class of income is the income that...
Seventy thousand a year, which can afford to live in that.
Okay, so $70,000 a year and up. I will ask our staff later as to the information they have on that. Now, the Grandview Woodlands plan, I was here at the tail end of that during the last term. Councillor Carr, I think, was here at the beginning of that. She was here a term before me. But it took a very long time to come to a conclusion because I understand there was a lot of input on that plan. I understand from our staff and the original presentation that this conforms to policy in the Grandview Woodland plan. Is there a concern with the entire Grandview Woodland plan or are you concerned with the plan itself or just this development?
Thank you very much for raising that question. Because the Grandview Woodland area council does not represent the neighborhood. That's the problem. You know, I think even, except for the, sorry, lack of a better word, I call her the secretary, is it Lily Chow? Everybody is Caucasian and, you know, they have made decision after decision, sorry to say, not representative of the local people. As Jean Swanson brought up last meeting of this issue, you know, average income, 40,000 people, a lot of artists, a lot of single moms. Do you know the Nonprofit Housing Association, the man who spoke, Pierre Kraus? His talk got cut in half. That man who represents Nonprofit Housing Association, even on his website today, shows how single moms in British Columbia are spending 64% of their income on housing. So, we do need housing in that area for the lower-income people because this is where they get their services, this is where they can shop. And when you bring in all these other people, they don't frequent the same establishments. They want other restaurants, they want other stores. And then the local people, just like what happened in Chinatown, don't get to have their services and their goods. And then, of course, that's gentrification. They have to leave.
So, I will look for the correspondence. I believe BC Nonprofit Housing Association sent us a letter. I seem to remember that referenced from Mr. Kraus. You're not here, you're not speaking on behalf of...
No, he spoke. He spoke.
Yeah, but I can't ask him questions again. So I will look and see if there's a letter. I understood he was speaking in support of the project.
He was. Strangely enough, it's not a nonprofit housing building.
My question was going to be for you, do you feel that this would meet the need for some people who are looking for affordable housing? Like, for instance, millennials? I have to say, somebody who knows a number of people who've moved out of this city, if I want to visit my friends, a lot of them my age, I have to, you know, head out of Vancouver. And I live like on the border of Vancouver. So I'm just wondering, do you think that this will meet the needs of affordability for some people?
Not even. Not the people that you're talking about. It's going to meet, what happens is when people move into that kind of housing, usually, what it is, is that they have the income level to live there and then they get to have quite a bit of disposable income. Those are the people who move into that neighborhood in that kind of housing. If you're talking about actually housing the people who, like I said, read these articles, one of them just got posted, according to the index, read about this. It's not serving the needs of the people who especially need the housing, the first two tiers of people who really need the housing. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks very much. And I think that's it for questions, so thanks for coming in tonight. Really appreciate you braving the rain. Okay, thank you. Oh, that's pretty tempting. Thank you. Thank you. Owen Brady, number 27. Then we have David Hutniak, 28, and Jennifer Harrington, 29. Very much, whenever you're ready, I'll turn it over. Oh, clerk, could you raise the desk there a little bit? There we go. Okay, thanks. Great. Anytime you're ready.
Okay. Good evening, mayor and council. I'm Owen Brady and I'm speaking in support of this rezoning. There was some speculation on Thursday about whether this project meets criteria set out in the GW Community Plan regarding incremental change in heritage clusters. The proposal represents an incremental introduction of secured rental homes to the Britannia Woodland area, and that is exactly what is desired in the plan. The project site is not nearby any of the designated heritage clusters. Not that it would matter if it was, as the plan does explicitly call for a mixed-scale character. There's even a drawing in this section of the plan of a six-story apartment building right beside a detached house. The only problem I see is that this should really be a six-story building as that would better address the goals of what's stated in the plan with more secured rental housing units. In Grandview Woodland, the median income of couple families with children was $112,000 in 2015. It's surely higher now. The two- and three-bedroom units being proposed will be affordable for many families that already live in the neighborhood. Furthermore, in the 10 years to the last census, the proportion of renters in Vancouver earning above $80,000 per year more than doubled, from 13% to 18%. If we're not building new apartments for these people to live in, where do we think they're going to live? Who's going to be pushed out? Dr. Jens von Bergman recently did an analysis of Vancouver and other Canadian cities and showed that census tracts that built little or no net housing in those 10 years almost all saw low-income households move away. While tracts that built, in the case of Vancouver, more than about 2,000 net units over that time, gained low-income households. This is a little counterintuitive, but the evidence says that even at the sub-neighborhood level, building more housing helps low-income households stay or move in. We see evidence of this trend in Grandview Woodland, where relatively little net housing was built over this period, and the low-income population dropped by almost 4,000 persons. These homes will also be pet-friendly. I think this is really important. I emailed the architect to ask just about it. Earlier today, I searched Craigslist to see how many apartments there were in the area. In that designated Britannia Woodland area, there were three pet-friendly rentals on offer. A couple of them were cheaper than, mostly basement suites were cheaper than what's being offered here, but, or proposed here, but some other units a little farther flung were more expensive. I personally can't live in a basement suite anyway. I have an indoor cat and she really likes having a balcony. My point being, the 28 additional homes this project will offer represent a drastic improvement in availability of pet-friendly rentals. Anyone who has looked for a pet-friendly apartment lately can tell you how hard it is. You may have heard that about 1,700 pets are surrendered to the BCSPCA every year because of housing-related issues. So that's a lot of numbers in the thousands when we're talking about 35 homes. I think this is the smallest incremental change we should even be talking about a rezoning for. So, I really encourage you to support this proposal.
Thank you very much. We have a question from councillor Carr.
Yes, thank you so much for coming in. Earlier, one of your comments was that this proposal does not, that does meet the area plan because its location, one reason was, is because its location is not near those heritage home clusters. So, where did you get that information from? Like, have you got a, can you tell me or point me to where the, there's a list of where the heritage clusters actually are designated?
Yeah, there's a map in the Britannia Woodland plan of the whole, of all of Grandview Woodland. It's not in the Britannia Woodland section, but there is specific places designated as heritage clusters.
Okay. I'll ask staff for the page number.
Yes, sir, I don't know the page number or even the section. I just searched.
Okay, thank you. I hunted for it and I couldn't find it, but thank you, Seth, for letting me know that it's there somewhere.
Absolutely.
Great, thank you.
Thanks for mentioning that. That's it for questions. Thank you for coming in. So next is David Hutniak, followed by Jennifer Harrington, and then speaker number 30, Edward Stringer. Thanks for coming in and whenever you're ready.
Good evening, your worship and council. My name is David Hutniak and I'm CEO of Landlord BC. I'm here tonight... I'm here tonight to speak on behalf of our thirty-three-hundred members in strong support of this critically important, secure, purpose-built rental housing project, providing thirty-five new homes for our community. B.C. families deserve to have access to safe, secure, sustainable rental housing. In order to address the persistently low vacancy rates in the city of Vancouver, we need to approve more projects such as the one before you tonight, projects that are geared towards secure, purpose-built rentals. Without robust construction of new purpose-built rentals in Vancouver, we will not be able to provide suitable housing for singles, young families, and seniors. Would also add that one cannot be, we, one cannot be for more affordability and restrict growth at the same time. As the city grows, we need to be prepared to provide a mix of housing options to the community. Current rental options available are disproportionately represented by aging, purpose-built rental buildings nearing the end of their functional life, or secondary suites unsuitable for families and with no security of tenure. This project provides badly-needed, secure, family-oriented homes that are close to transit, shops, and services. Furthermore, please know that renters want the health and safety that comes with these new buildings. Your Worship and Council, please know that it is, it continues to remain extremely challenging to build rental due to, due to developer preference to build condos, due to high land and construction costs, and perhaps even more critically, due to the fact that we have a legislative environment that makes it very challenging to operate rental in B.C., let alone build it. So here we have a proponent willing to assume the risks, risk, and build secure, purpose-built rental housing. In our view, we should not be putting up unnecessary barriers, we should be supporting them for enhancing our community. Now, I know, I wish to acknowledge that under your leadership and with the strong support of a very capable staff, we have seen some very good progress in the provision of housing for the homeless, the working class, and the middle class through initiatives like the temporary modular housing, partnerships with the community housing sector, and innovative programs like Rental One Hundred. This is a good thing, and the community is very grateful for your vision. I should also acknowledge that this has been achieved against the backdrop, backdrop of strong, albeit ill-conceived objections from some members of the community. We encourage you not fall, to fall prey to their, to their rhetoric. Vancouver is a highly desirable place to live, and purchasing a home in Vancouver is out of reach for more and more families. However, let's remember that there's absolutely nothing wrong with renting one's home, and that there should be no stigma to being a renter. The reality is that renting is the smarter option for a steadily increasing number of individuals and families in Vancouver, as it provides financial flexibility, enhanced mobility, and reduces the huge risks that are often associated with purchasing a home. As city staff recently, recently reported, in the order of seventy-six percent of all new Vancouver residents are renters. Thus, it is important incumbent upon you to understand that those who oppose projects of this nature fail to recognize that the broader socio-economic importance of a robust supply of new rental housing in, and are instead focused on their own self-interests. In closing, I wish to reiterate that Landlord B.C. strongly supports this project, and we ask that Your Worship and Council approve this application, uh, this rezoning application, to ensure that this critical, critical rental housing gets built. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. And do you have a question from Councilor Dej Novo?
Thank you.
The five minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Hutniak. I know you've been here a number of times throughout, uh, the terms that I've been on council, and here for various reasons. Tonight, we're here to discuss this project, but I, I happen to remember meetings about the Grandview Woodland Plan, and there were people that said we might never get to this point, because it would be hard to build within the plan. But here we are, reading the report again in between the, the days that we've been here, um, looking at the policies that this conforms to. I also have to consider, not just this project, the impact it has on the community. And I'm wondering if you think, considering some of the comments you just made in your presentation, that this would send a message to other landlords or potential applicants that, uh, there is an opportunity to make rental available to people, new rental available to people in the neighborhood? So do you think that the, this being one of the, one of the first, um, I would say, applications of its type in the, in the plan, which is fairly new, uh, you don't have to answer my question, but I'm wondering if you, you might, uh, be able to elaborate on the impact you think this might have on the community? And what I mean by community is, uh, those who provide housing and may, maybe considering doing that right now.
Um, I, I think that this, this project actually is, uh, you know, what comes out of your decision tonight is going to be really very telling in terms of where we go forward with, with building new rental housing. Um, you know, there have been a couple of really, you know, well-publicized through the media, uh, public hearings recently, the townhouses in, in, on Granville was certainly one that was very controversial, uh, a lot of moving parts to it. But this one is like, very straightforward in, in my view, and in fact, the proponent is compromised by reducing the number of units by chopping off a floor. You know, there was a, a very extensive, uh, consultative process that came to the point where this type of housing is, you know, acceptable in the community. And I think, as I said in my comments, that when we have a proponent who's prepared to take the risk and incur the cost to do this, uh, when he could easily build condos somewhere else, uh, I think we need to jump on this opportunity and say yes to these. And, and very, yeah, but this is my own personal opinion now. I mean, I, I know, talking to the rental development community, there's a, there's, we're stalled, and we're missing opportunities, interest rates are still low, so, you know, this is the type of housing we need to build at, at large scale, not just, you know, thirty-five units, so I hope we do.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thanks very much. A question from Councilor Carr, next.
Yes, thank you, thank you so much for coming. You're very diligent about coming and speaking to issues, and I really appreciate you bringing, um, the perspective of your members. Um, so the question is this, uh, the staff report says that it's going to take a minimum of seventy thousand dollars to afford a one-bedroom, um, at thirty percent of, of one's household income, and, uh, when you get to the price tag on the three-bedroom, it'll be a hundred to thirty-three thousand. We're challenged with finding housing for renters in this city, the, their majority of, of people in this city, whose median income is well below fifty thousand. How do you, at Landlord B.C., sort of cope or grapple with that challenge?
Yeah, I mean, it's a, it's a huge challenge. I mean, it's, it's something that we're, we're concerned about. You know, when you look at the cost of land and, and, you know, all the cost drivers, it's, uh, you know, that's part of the unfortunate reality. But, uh, you know, when we look at sort of the broader spectrum of, of folks who are here and working, we have a lot of good jobs, we have many more good jobs coming here. Uh, the fact of the matter is, you know, we, we're starting to see some great support from the provincial government for, you know, in terms of the social housing, the, the feds are coming, have come to the table as well. I mean, you know, there's a lot to do there, but we can't ignore, you know, that, that other cohort of, of citizens here who, two teachers are making a hundred and forty thousand a year, they can afford to live there. We need those people to live in the community. And then it goes back to my, one of the comments I made here, you can't be for affordability and opposed to, you know, building new supply. I mean, they do go hand in hand. Rental housing is highly elastic. What we know is that you build more, as the supply increases, there's more choice, and there's downward pressure on prices. And, and we see it in other jurisdictions, we're missing an opportunity here. And, and when you have a community plan that approves a, you know, that has, that, uh, approves a project like this, or, or says, validates a project like this, then we should be, we shouldn't be, you know, debating this a whole bunch, we should be saying, get the shovel in the ground, create more jobs, uh, building this, this, this housing, there's so many opportunities here, and we just can't afford to miss them.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thanks very much, and that's it for questions. Okay, Jennifer Harrington, number twenty-nine, Edward Stringer, thirty, Ron Clay, thirty-one. Ms. Harrington?
Uh, hello, Your Worship and Council. Um, I am speaking as a member of Grandview Woodlands community, I live at Clarkin First, right next door to another development that's being planned with the sobriety center. There's a lot of talk about low-income rental housing that's so very needed, but I've seen how this goes. I lived in Toronto for fourteen years and fought, um, something that was happening in my own apartment building, which was a rental. We had some townhouses and a lovely pool and some nice trees that were very important to our, uh, community, and we fought for two years to avoid having a precedent-setting building put in place of those features. Uh, that was much higher than anything else, much narrower, um, similar to what you would see in the downtown core, not what you would see in the High Park area, which was where we lived. And, uh, the social justice flag was waved throughout the entire process, we're building low-income housing, we're building rental units. Well, once they were waved through the door, guess what they did? Turned it into condominiums. So we need to be watchdogs about this, because this happens all the time. And already, the Clarkin First development that I'm also opposing, that's across the street from where I live right now, uh, they promised a certain amount of low-income rental housing, and that's already been reduced, before they've even gotten the stakes in the ground. So this is what developers do, they use social justice as a way to get bleeding hearts on side with building something that's just a big money grab, quite frankly. And personally, I don't think the rents that are being advertised for this housing are particularly affordable. I pay twelve fifty a month, I pay probably the most of anybody in my apartment, people pay eight fifty a month. People that have lived there for over thirty years, elderly people, um, people with mental health issues, at-risk people, they are not going to be able to afford to live in a place like that. And those are the kind of people, if you really want to talk about social housing, that we should be concerned about, not the people that have the money to afford stuff that is on the market right now. Um, so the rest of what I wanted to say, uh, Grandview Woodlands area, I've been here for almost a year now, um, absolutely love it, and it has a lot of very special features, it's a very artistic community, um, it's a very friendly area, it's probably a group in North Vancouver, the only area in Vancouver where you get a real sense of community, get a real sense of people having, um, freedom, um, free minds, free thinking, um, and, and a really nice artistic community. It's, uh, marked by leafy tree-lined streets and colorful character homes, it's inspired murals and artwork in Vancouver for decades. I'm staunchly opposed to any plans that remove character homes and mature trees, which provides so much value to this neighborhood. This is a tourist city, this neighborhood is a tourist attraction, people will travel here just to have the opportunity to walk and bike around and take in the beautiful scenery. It's something that really calms me down, to ride my bike around and have a look at those beautiful old houses, and when I drive by and see those big development signs in front of a gorgeous character house, it gives me so much pleasure just to be in the presence of, it breaks my heart. It absolutely breaks my heart, and I don't think it's impossible to find sites where you don't have to rip down beautiful houses and you don't have to rip down old trees. I think there's plenty of locations in Vancouver that could be rethought, and I think this area is being targeted for a specific purpose. As a city, we should have appreciation for a community's history, the intrinsic value that these neighborhoods hold. I understand the need for new affordable housing and the push for density, but removing character homes and mature trees and dismantling the most eclectic and interesting neighborhood in the city is simply not acceptable, and this is one part of a huge plan that we all know about. It's, it's, if it starts here, it's going to keep going and keep going until there's nothing left of that neighborhood. The Greater Vancouver area has numerous locations where density could be supported and even welcomed. As a city, we should be focused on improvements when planning new developments, not simply developing areas that would be the most lucrative to build and sell. There are neighborhoods that need improvement, old apartment buildings that could be upgraded or replaced, plenty of opportunities to improve the city, tearing down buildings that have intrinsic aesthetic value and literally make the neighborhood what it is and give the city its unique flavor, and what make Vancouver so special is madness. This is simply an example of irresponsible city planning designed to make profit for developers and using social justice as a way in. Cities should be planned for residents, not for companies that stand to profit for the buildings that they erect. Uh, we've already lost so much of Vancouver's character in the West, and where character homes used to be the norm, let's not allow this to happen on the East Side, where you can still find this amazing sense of peace and civic pride, or the true, a true sense of community that's stronger anywhere else than, than, and anywhere else in Vancouver. These old houses are a part of what inspires the residents of the East Side and feeds the creative and artistic vibe of the area. If we start dismantling this neighborhood piece by piece so that developers can make a profit, we lose an incredibly rich and important part of Vancouver's heritage. I know these aren't necessarily heritage quote-unquote buildings, but they do have intrinsic value, and they, I have seen them, and they're not the kind of things that I want to see being on the chopping block, just so that we can get a new high-rise in. This building is not necessary in this location, is not a good plan for Grandview Woodlands, this project should be moved to an area that's more in keeping with the style of the building, does not require destroying a beautiful neighborhood that brings joy to so many people. That's all I have to say.
Thank you very much. And you got a question from Councilor Dej Novo?
Thanks very much. Um, thank you for, for coming tonight, and I'm wondering, just, you had talked about twelve hundred and fifty dollars for rent, I know that that is a situation for a number of people. Is there, in displacing people, and you, you and others have used that word, I mean, is it realistic to think that a new building could, could provide twelve hundred and fifty dollars in, in rent, in your opinion?
Well, we're, we're talking about, there's all this talk about social housing and the need for housing, but the people that you're housing are not people that are in desperate need. They absolutely are not, and that is a fact that we do need low-income housing, we need to be able, there's people that can't afford more than eight hundred and fifty bucks a month, and they're, they're struggling to pay that, and those are not the people that we care about. Those are the people that have lived in Vancouver for a long time, and there could be, you know, I mean, the government should step in, in these situations, instead of it just being this rampant sort of, you know, developer, and, and the prices are driven up every time we agree to, to these kinds of developments where you can charge however much for, for apartment and for the condos that are all going in that are, you know, five-
So I, I hear you with vulnerable people, I mean, three hundred and seventy-five dollars, I, I think that should be a challenge as to, you know, what, what someone can find for three hundred and seventy-five dollars. Usually, the shelter allowance and the shelter rate needs to be subsidized by B.C. housing, by some type of creative partnership. I agree completely with you, and my background's in non-market housing, and so I, I have to sometimes create those partnerships, so it inspired me to be here.
Yeah.
Looking at the most vulnerable, and then sort of we look at what other speakers had talked about, Shaughnessy, do we, I mean, do you see, see, I, what I'm hearing from other speakers is that Grandview Woodlands, you know, kind of was a, was and should be a place to ha, to house that missing middle, or the middle who might have to leave Vancouver if not. Is that, like, you had talked about providing housing for those who really, really need it. I agree with you, I'm, the housing that we're looking at today would be for a certain income, um, and sort of meets the initiatives of the plan. So my questions for you are the plan, do you have an issue with just this project or the plan overall?
Uh, I have a, I have an issue with, like I said, the location. I don't like it being in a neighborhood where you're removing trees, you're removing houses, you're taking away the character of the neighborhood. I understand that there's a need for density, but there's a lot of places in Vancouver that could use a little fix-up, that could be developed, that could be, have projects like this where they would be welcomed. This is not a place where it's a good fit. And it's one step in a direction that is going to absolutely destroy the neighborhood, because I've seen the long-term plans, and I know what's going to happen.
Thank you very much. A clarifying question, is it the neighborhood, or is it this specific site that you talk about when you're saying this location?
Um, well, the site represents, um, what's happening throughout the neighborhood. It's, it's, it's one of the first stages of this huge development plan, which is to completely change the face of the neighborhood, completely change what it looks like to go walking through there. I don't want to go in there and see a whole bunch of condos and new builds and rental units, I really don't care what you're charging. If you're taking away the character of the neighborhood, you are destroying Vancouver. And it's, you know, it's, it's sad that we can't just have, you know, housing for every single person and, 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 you know, build all these multiplexes, but part of Vancouver is, is, is having these neighborhoods and having these old historic buildings. There are other places that we can build things, we can be a little bit more creative, we can be a little bit more thoughtful. I do feel like Grandview Woodlands is being targeted because it's an artistic area, and I think that they're, you know, intentionally ripping these places out to, to just sort of break the back of the neighborhood, quite frankly.
Thank you.
Turn it into an elite enclave like everything else in Vancouver, and we don't need that.
Thank you for sharing your opinion.
You're welcome.
Thanks very much, and that's it for questions. Uh, thanks. Just to remind council, we're at quarter to seven now, and we have one, two, three, four, five, six, seven speakers on the list, plus members of the public that may want to speak as well, plus our debate and decision that we hope to get to tonight before ten. Uh, so we have number thirty, Edward Stringer. All right, thanks so much, and, uh, up to five minutes whenever you're ready.
Thank you. Your Honor and Councillors, my name is Edward Stringer, and I reside at fifteen-ten Grant Street at the corner of Grant and Woodland Drive. I am opposed to the recommendation. Having lived at the corner of Grant and Woodland for a quarter of a century, I've seen many people come and go from our corner of Grandview Woodlands. Wanting to be involved in the community, I've served as a board member on the Britannia Services Centre, and I was a member of the Citizens Assembly. Right off, I must say, I am at least annoyed by the developers' insinuation that this development corresponds to the Citizens Assembly's recommendation- development corresponds to the Citizens Assembly's recommendation. As I recall, and I absolutely do not presume to speak for the Citizens Assembly, any housing of this magnitude was proposed for main streets such as Victoria Drive and especially Nanimal. In fact, if memory serves, Nanimal Street was included in the geographic area as it was thought to have potential for combined residential and commercial properties. Further to the Citizens Assembly, during the weekends, we worked on the Grandview Woodlands Plan. Several members were skeptical that it was only a PR ploy. I didn't agree at the time, but now, well, given that we are all here looking for a building that doesn't fit the plan, I'm not so sure it wasn't just a sop. The size and design of the proposed development simply do not fit figuratively and literally on Grant Street. Increased car and bicycle traffic will effectively block the street. Already, there are cars waiting to drive east on Grant on a steady basis throughout the day. And as a cyclist, I avoid the street. It's very, very dangerous. People don't see you, and if the weather is inclement, it's best left. Living above the traffic circle at Grant and Woodland, I marvel that there are not more cyclists and car accidents, and more traffic will definitely not alleviate this danger. One of the strengths of this neighborhood is the diversity of its residents, which is well demonstrated in the current tenants of the existing housing. It does not seem that demolishing existing affordable housing for much more expensive apartments will serve to preserve or encourage diversity in terms of income, origin, occupation, and so on. Increased density is necessary, as are smaller residences. I live very well in 804 square feet that I purchased in 1994, enabling a happy early retirement. So I say bring on more housing, just not this way. Bring on some subsidized housing, and don't insult us by calling one-bedroom apartments at the going rate in Vancouver affordable. Look to other designs in the neighborhood. Don't offer up the East Side as pickings for developers. Please take this challenge, take this chance to encourage innovation in design and true affordability, as well as respecting local residents who have given of their time to guide you to following a policy of increased density that works for all of the citizens of Grandview Woodland. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. You do have questions from Counselor Carr.
Yes. Thanks very much, and thank you for serving on the Citizens Assembly and contributing to your community. What do you remember of the discussion about the neighborhood, streetscape, character, home clusters? Do you remember any discussion at the Citizens Assembly about that?
That wasn't my specific group, but I certainly do remember the discussion.
And what was your conclusion in terms of what you remember about where those clusters were and how they were determined?
It seems to me, and again, memory doesn't always serve perfectly, but it seems to me that anything very high-density was designed for wider streets, and a street like Grant Street didn't even come up in discussion.
It wasn't raised? Okay, there were no specifics that you remember?
Not in plan or recessions.
Yeah, okay, okay. And in terms of the actual issue around the affordability of the housing, what was talked about in the Gradual Plan in terms of aiming at how to get at affordability or enable more affordability in terms of housing?
Boy, it was a huge, huge discussion, and it was one of the things that we really grappled with. And to be quite honest, I don't remember what conclusions were arrived at. Again, that wasn't the section I was involved in.
Right, right. You did mention to us tonight that it would be great if there were more social housing or subsidized housing. You know, right now in the city of Vancouver, 98% of the housing that's developed is private developers. It's not government-subsidized. So how would you, if you were in our shoes, how would you grapple with that dilemma of just not having senior government money in order to provide the extent of housing at a subsidized level that's needed?
Well, I'm a retired French teacher, not an accountant to start with, but it seems to me that if you're developing something in Vancouver, you're subject to the rules of Vancouver. And I don't, again, it's not my field of expertise, but I don't understand why, when someone pays for development, that one of the conditions can't be a certain amount of housing is given over to B.C. Housing to be run. A small amount of that housing, but if you're going to build 38 units, I don't see why four of those units can't be some sort of subsidized housing.
Thanks. I'll take that suggestion, but thank you for coming.
Thanks. Another question from Counselor Weep. Please go ahead, Counselor Weep.
Yeah, we're hearing a lot that it doesn't, the fit's too large. But the current RM4 zone talks about it's allowed to be 150 feet wide, and the plan talks about being a max 200. Is it the width of it? Should it be broken down is what you think would be more of the community fit? Or what is the scale that you think would be appropriate for this site?
So you're asking me about?
The scale. We're hearing a lot that it's just, it's too big on a block with a single house, but currently it's zoned, it could actually go bigger, right? And same with the Grandview Woodlands Plan. So what do you think would be a scalable size for a property in this zone?
Well, I can give you an example of the building I live in, 1510 Grant, which mostly runs along Woodland Drive, is stepped and looks very much as though five or six, four or five houses were put together. I'm not so good with the actual numbers, but I do think that there are other designs, and there are certainly examples in the neighborhood of better designs that would be less blockish. So when I look at it and I've thought about the design, I like the fact that there are setbacks, but I think that by bringing it down and having space between some of the units, that certainly with fewer units, in my opinion, you could produce a very, very attractive building on this site.
Okay, and we've talked about the peaked roofs a few times. This obviously has a full green roof and then a many space for all the tenants if it were to be built. Do you think the peaked roof is something, or do you think green roofs is something we should be moving forward with?
I think green roofs are a great idea until you have to live underneath one.
Okay.
I think that they're very problematic. And when I read this plan, I wondered who would in fact have access and how all that would be managed, because it's not a strata building. Certainly, peaked roofs are not as efficient. You're not going to get as much space. But I think that peaked roofs definitely fit into the neighborhood. And in fact, if you look at the building that was built across the street, peaked roofs are a significant architectural feature.
Thank you very much. Thank you, sir. No more questions. Thanks for coming in this evening. Okay, we have Ron Clay, number 31, David Dove, number 32, Anthony Cotter, 33. Mr. Clay?
Good evening, Mayor. Counselors, thank you for the opportunity to speak. My name is Ron Clay, and I'm one of the homeowners of the four properties immediately north of the proposed redevelopment site. Having resided at our 1907 Heritage Character Home for 17 years, I'm also a design professional, having worked for a local architectural firm for plus-minus 25 years. I'm strongly opposed to this rezoning application in its current form and is previously characterized by the UTP for its lack of contextual fit, most notably due to the proposed height enassing. In my opinion, contextual fit must include due consideration for incremental growth and also clearly acknowledge the value and the likelihood that the adjacent cluster of unrecognized, undocumented heritage character houses that surround the subject property are in fact remaining, as is entirely true of the houses on Kitchener and Grant Street. And in my opinion, the UDP's concerns regarding fit were a qualitative discretionary nature, but the response in fact has been insubstantive. I would suggest that a loss of 360 square feet does not translate to a significant reduction in mass, but is rather like a balloon that has been pressed down from above and has expanded in width as a result. The volume is essentially the same. I'm not opposed to increased density in the neighborhood. As a design professional, we recognize the need to provide for appropriate contemporary solutions for pent-up demand for livable and affordable housing stock throughout the city. But I firmly believe, as previously asserted by my neighbors, that rezonings are meant to be an incremental increase in density from the base zoning and should reflect the principles of sensitive and inclusive design that aim to mitigate the gap between the existing and the proposed. I find the current proposal, despite the fact that it has been reduced to five-story, remains an affront to the existing context and can't accept that this is what the current Grandview Woodlands policy was striving to emulate. The proposed development aims to approach the maximum height and density allowed under the Grandview Woodlands policy, which was only intended for an assumed standard site under acceptably reasonable and supportable conditions. It is surely not the intent that all sites can achieve this maximum height and density. And most certainly, the max possible density is not a fit for this particular block as it is with its compressed lot pattern and steep topography. As clearly stated in the policy document, page 82, note that maximum allowable density may not be achievable on all sites owing to lot size, existing development, and other urban design considerations. Counsel could also be reminded of the history of previous development proposals approved for this site, including a DP in 2016 under RM4 abandoned in favor of the current rezoning for only three stories, raising the question, if a development could not achieve maximum height under base zoning, why should a rezoning achieve near maximum height? Is it only because it has the label rental accommodation? Are we that driven by perceived political forces over supporting the continued long-term quality of our existing neighborhoods? As residents, we've worked diligently and entirely within the existing planning and zoning guidelines to restore and to preserve our properties, noticeably contributing to the culture, quality, and livability of our neighborhood, all while sustaining the original scale, character, and presence of our respective homes, as prescribed under the relevant COV renovation standards and guidelines. Our 1907 home has been painstakingly restored, adding a legal secondary suite in 2011, and we've been invited to participate in the Vancouver Heritage Foundation Heritage House Tours twice in the recent past, and we're scheduled to be on the upcoming VHF 2019 Grandview Heritage Tour later this month. Our existing neighbor house immediately south is virtually an unpolished mirror of our own dating to 1907 with an equivalent mass, floor plan, and essential character presence on Grant Street. But the historic and cultural value of this house appears to go entirely unrecognized by the policy report and by this rezoning development, which I suggest is a complete oversight. While I can appreciate that the connection, proximity to local amenities, including the drive and public transportation, is a significant factor, and it looks favorable from a broader urban planning perspective, it's the immediately adjacent properties that are most directly and irreversibly impacted by the physical imposition of this development. This mass will undeniably compromise our rightful access to clear daylight and sky views and diminish the cultural and heritage values of the entire block, the entire neighborhood. I believe that our neighborhood and our block can better accommodate those who strive to share the same quality of life that we are blessed to experience. We already live comfortably amidst single duplex and multifamily developments, and we have done so successfully and historically. We are entirely accustomed to diversity and contrast in our built surroundings, but we urge Counsel to accept only the highest possible design standard for respect, compatibility, and integration with the existing context and to not allow the imposition of such a grossly overscale development to overshadow the existing and essential character of our home block. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your time. There's no questions, so thank you very much coming in this evening. We have, let's see, David Dove, number 32, Anthony Cotter, number 33, Owen James, 34. Mr. Dove, please go ahead whenever you're ready.
Good evening. My name is David Dove. I too live at 1548 Kitchener Street with this guy. I've met most of you in my capacity as Chair of Vancouver Heritage Foundation. I too am also an architect, have been for 27 years in the city of Vancouver. For the last 10 years, I've largely been practicing in mixed-use and residential development. So this is a building typology that I know quite well. Our office is currently doing, working on about 8,000 units of residential housing in the city and neighborhoods. While I'm typically on this side of the podium, asking you to support an application, in this case, I am not. I do recognize the irony in that. So I want to speak about the urban design and community planning issues around this. From a planning and urban design perspective, there are two primary principles that I work to. One, understanding what is particular about a site, working to its strengths and mitigate its limitations. And secondly, rezonings, they're about envisioning a future and finding a way to implement incremental change toward the future. So the first point, understanding what is particular and unique. You've heard from the applicant's architect that this is a very tough lot to build on. I get that. What is tough about it is something that I think you need to understand. This is not a typical block, and it's very difficult and maybe inappropriate to try and shoehorn a typical development into it. What is particular, you've again heard this, the lack of the lane, the reduced width of the block, 62 feet narrower than a typical block in the plan, and the extreme topography of a site. It should be noted that the only other building in this type of a condition is between Grant and, on Grant, between cotton and commercial. It is a four-story building, but it's sunk about a half-floorery in the buildings in the grade, so from the street, it appears as a three-and-a-half-story building. It also has sloping shed roofs, so it does not appear as a four-story building in any When I've worked on similar projects myself, I have gone to the neighbors, I've sat in their backyard, I've tried to get their perspective on their issues. At Shannon Estate, when we were working on that gravel, 57th, we were building a four-story building next to an existing two-story house. While the house sat higher than ours, we still stepped back the third floor and the fourth floor. While it was a sideyard condition, we gave it a backyard separation. Guardrails were replaced with planters to soften the imposition on the neighbor. Much was made about the shadow studies that suggest that this four-story building, the four-story hypothetical building on this site, would really have the same shadows as a five-story building or a six-story building. This is simply not a logically supportable argument. Using the same building footprint, a four-story building would have to have, for a five-story building to have the same shadows of a four-story building, the top would have to be set back at least 11 feet. In the shadow diagrams, it does look like the four-story and the five-story are very similar. However, the applicant has used a much deeper floor plate for the four-story building, and that's how it ends up with a deeper shadow. We've gone back last night, reviewed the RM4 zoning. It requires actually a 35 rear yard setback, not a 30-foot rear yard setback, so it would not be possible to build a deeper building on this site. But we shouldn't be comparing the shadows of a four, or five, or six-story building on this site. We should be comparing the shadows of a building on a typical site to the shadows on this site. That's the issue. We're rezoning this site, and there is a dramatic site grade on this site that can't be denied, it can't be changed, and it needs to be understood. Staff suggested in the last open house or the last meeting here that they thought the grade issue had been sufficiently addressed by the reduction in height. In addition to the 17-feet cross-slope to the site, you need to understand that the lowest parts of the proposed site are at least three feet higher than the highest parts of our sites. So no, the recent height reduction has not addressed the site grading condition, and it certainly has not addressed the impact of the narrow block. On incremental change, as my neighbor John mentioned, this is going to be up to you. On a current large site that I'm working on, staff have asked me to consider two- and three-story townhomes as a backyard couplet to existing two-story, single-family houses. Yet they understand that those two-story houses are going to be gone and replaced with six-story buildings in the next 20 years. That's what they consider to be incremental growth on that site. So what's incremental growth on this site?
We're just up to five minutes, but you do have questions from Counselor DeGenova and Counselor Carr. Thanks very much for coming in. And please, Counselor DeGenova, go ahead.
Thank you, and thanks for acknowledging the irony. That was, I appreciate, I appreciate you talking about another site. I know we're here to talk about this site this evening. I'm wondering, with this, looking at the policy that this conforms to, the Grandview Woodland Community Plan, the pace-of-change policy for the Grandview Woodland Community Plan, I mean... Plan, and, and you don't have to answer my question, but are, do you believe that this meets the plan's policies?
Sadly, not that simple. You'll hear that it does meet the setbacks. It, in fact, doesn't meet the front yard setback, but it does meet the rear yard setback, and that's what, of course, that's the one that would affect me as a neighbor to the north. However, the rear yard setback is never a condition, it's never a concern with these types of buildings. You can't build a building like this, a bar building, more than about sixty to sixty-five feet deep. They just are no longer functionally efficient. So you end up with a deeper rear yard setback anyhow. So the twenty feet that's required usually ends up being closer to thirty-five feet. So technically, yes, they check that box. Technically, they check the box of the height. But no, I do not believe that it is meeting the intent, because the intent has to assume, again, of these forty-two blocks in the subarea, forty of them are the same. Forty of them are largely flats, forty of those sites of the forty-two have a lane, forty of those have a hundred-and-twenty-foot yards. This one block does not. And so, you know, and I, and staff can't, cannot design for the worst-case scenario, and that's why we have you to come back to.
I, I would argue that staff don't design things that come to us. I mean, they work with.
Don't design the criteria.
Yeah. No, I, I appreciate that. I'm also wondering, on Kitchener, and, and I assume you know this, again, you don't have to answer it, even if you did know it, on Kitchener, the home that you live in and the other homes in that block, are they protected heritage homes? Are they protected?
No, they are not. We could apply, and our house probably would qualify.
So I, I'm just, I'm looking at the way that you are, and I'm trying to consider what you've said. I understand that you're saying in this piece of the forty-two blocks, but it means that sometimes we don't see an application that starts at one end of the plan and comes to the other, because it all depends what comes up when and how that comes up, as I know you know very well, because you have presented before us on other projects. So considering it's not, do you think it's fair to say in this project that in moving forward with this and staff recommending this, they consider the fact that, yes, you could apply, anyone could apply if they, if they met the protected heritage criteria, but if, if that hasn't been applied for, then they have to move forward with what's in front of them? The fact that it's not right now protected heritage?
Whether our house was protected or not would not necessarily change staff's position on this. I simply say and suggest to you that what's in front of you is not what was intended by the policy.
Okay. Thank you for answering my questions. It's been very helpful to hear.
Thanks very much. Counselor Carr?
Yes, thank you also for coming. I really appreciate it. I'd like to just get you to apply the obvious depth of experience you've had in the, in the Vancouver Heritage Foundation, and that is around the idea of these heritage home or character home clusters. Have you had any discussions, you know, around, around that? What, what is a cluster of character homes? How many homes is that? You know, what is your, yeah, what are the criteria, do you think?
So what has been identified in the plan are, I believe, five to seven groupings of heritage houses. There are three by Mosaic Park. There's a couple, I believe, across from Grandview Park. They are collections of houses that, if, if restored, would be fine examples of what was built at the turn of the century. How those houses were selected, I, I can't speak to that. I know during the previous application for the, the subject site, one house was deemed to be valuable enough to be retained. That's the one that is behind us and really is just a mere copy of our house, although there's a little bit of garbage that needs to be taken off of it. So, you know, in one application, it was deemed heritage value, and this application, it's not. Obviously, my, my hope is that counsel will consider this more than just through the lens of rental housing. There's much more than rental housing that creates a, a community, and you are building a city. Your decisions build the city.
So I, I visited this site today. I went, I, because of the discussion that's going on, I thought I, I just would like to see it for, for myself, just to be there on those blocks. And there, there's a lot of older homes, a lot, on that particular block and in some of the surrounding blocks. So how would you, you're a professional in this area, and you volunteer in this field as well. So how would, what would you use as criteria? I mean, you, you use the term not charact, well, not character, but heritage, and there's a difference, right? So these homes might be character homes, but not heritage homes. How would you, I guess, where would you draw the line?
There are a lot of character homes in the neighborhood. When you look at the, the site plan or the community plan, what does stand out is most of the blocks do have larger apartment buildings or condo buildings in them. This is one block that actually does have none. That's what makes this block unique. One of the things that makes this block unique. The difference between character homes and heritage homes, the definition for heritage homes is, is more precise, and I believe it was work between counsel and, sorry, staff and volunteers to broaden the definition to character homes, to capture homes that were post nineteen forty, as, as, you know, they too will eventually have what we consider to be character and, and critical to the character of a neighborhood.
Most of those homes look like they were pre-nineteen forty. Is that your assessment of that block?
Yes, they are. The one behind us is the same, same vintage as ours, nineteen oh seven.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Thanks. That's it for questions. Thanks for coming in this evening. Okay, we have Anthony Cotter, Owen James, Stephanie Langford, and Nathan Davidovich. So number thirty-three, Anthony Cotter, thanks for coming in. Whenever you want to go.
Mayor, councilors, thank you for the opportunity to speak with you tonight, and, and thanks to my fellow neighbors who have come out and shared their experience and expertise. I've learned a lot. My name is Anthony Cotter. I grew up in Tawasne, but Grandview Woodland has been my home for the past four years. I'm particularly familiar with the grade of the hill that's, that's been talked about. I bike up it a few times a week to get to my, my gym on Grant and Commercial. I'm here to tell you, I'm here tonight to tell you why, despite the flaws of this project, I support it. The recommendation from the city staff professionals is to approve the bylaw amendment. And so the question in your minds is probably along the lines of, are any of the, any of the concerns from the public significant enough to overturn staff's recommendation? Staff are only human, I'm a fellow bureaucrat, and it's possible that they might have missed something. The building could be out of alignment with the Grandview Woodland Community Plan, but it's not. The plan explicitly calls for six stories of secured rental housing in this area. The site could threaten one of the many protected elements in the plan, like character streetscapes or designated heritage houses, but it doesn't. The proponent could have, could have ignored feedback from the urban design panel, but they didn't. In fact, the panel was supportive of this being rental housing and the height, and the proponent adopted recommendations to mitigate concerns about massing and facade. The building could provide inadequate parking, but it doesn't. The legal minimum for this site is twenty, and the building provides twenty-three. Now, we could have a broader conversation about whether or not these kinds of questions about design and character and community plans and parking are the kinds of questions we should be asking. I think there's a strong case to be made that during a housing crisis and during a climate emergency, we should be putting less weight on whether or not a new building is a contextual fit with buildings designed for a hundred-year-old society, and whether or not there is an appropriate amount of fossil fuel infrastructure. There are two questions, however, that I, I do think are worth asking in this moment. The first is about the displacement of existing tenants. The city's existing tenant protection policies are inadequate and do not provide enough support for vulnerable populations and insecure housing. In this case, the proponent's tenant relocation plan provides for the current tenants to return at below-market rates. If they support some of the recommendations that have come from counsel for deeper discounts, then there would be no long-term decrease in affordability for any of the current tenants. Still, there would be impacts, and those should be mitigated. Maybe for future projects, instead of a urban design panel, we could have a tenant protection panel who reviews applications and make recommendations to improve protections for existing tenants. The second is about the affordability of the neighborhood. Grandview Woodland desperately needs truly affordable homes for people with low or no incomes, who are disproportionately indigenous, immigrants, cultural communities, and/or people working in the arts and nonprofit sectors. This building does not provide that. And if this is the only kind of housing we were going to build, then it might take a long time before people that face stigmatization and oppression and economic barriers in Vancouver get the housing justice they deserve. This is not the only kind of housing we're building, and in fact, it's false to say that we have to choose between two mutually exclusive approaches to housing in Vancouver. I've been taking some, some improv classes, and one of the first things they teach you is that to keep a scene moving forward, you should always respond to what your partner offers you with yes and, instead of no but. This is not perfect housing, but it is better housing. We can both approve the imperfect offerings of our private partners that move the needle towards the right kind of supply, and work hard to build coalitions and make transformative public investments in social and supportive housing. We can provide thirty-five households and families a place to live and raise children in a green and walkable and dynamic community, instead of on a heavily trafficked and polluted arterial or in a car-dependent suburb. And we can work on deeper solutions that shift housing from a commodity to a human right. During a housing crisis, we have to do both, because at the end of the day, rejecting better housing does not build perfect housing. Let's keep the scene moving forward. Please join me in saying yes and.
Thanks very much for coming in this evening. Oh, Counselor Kirby Young, to ask you a few questions. Thanks very much.
Hi, thanks for being here. I just have a quick question. I know you mentioned that you lived in the neighborhood for four years, and it's totally up to you if you want to answer it, but I'm just curious what motivated you to come and speak if you are a renter, or if there's specifically what it was about this project?
I, I lived in a multifamily unit near Templeton in Dundas for a couple of years. I was a renter there. It was a condo building. And then recently, I was a renter in a rental one-hundred building, the Bosa Foods building on, on Victoria and Ferndale. I've actually recently just moved a block east of Nanaimo, so I think technically I'm in Hasting Sunrise now, but I think this is still, still part of my community. I, I think, I support this housing because I, it, in the long-term vision of what, what this neighborhood should look like, we need to build this kind of housing. I think we need to build more multifamily housing. We can't be building the kind, or supporting the kind of, of housing that, that serves the, the needs of a society that is not our current society. I, I think that we need more supply, and we need to do the, the other, other things that I talked about, about bringing additional social and supportive housing, but, but I, we don't get anywhere if we don't build these kinds of projects. I mean, this is a, this is a classic example of a project where there's, there's very little displacement. It's replacing a single-family homes, which is a, a typography of house that I think we have to move away from in Vancouver if we're to, to have any kind of hope at affordability, and it's replacing it with secure market, purpose-built rental. As I said, it's not a perfect project, but, but I think it's really a step in the right direction, and I think it would send a really bad message that if, if, if this was not to go forward.
Appreciate the perspective. Thank you.
Thanks very much, and that's it for questions. I have, let's see, Owen James, Stephanie Langford, and Nathan Davidovich. Thanks very much, Mr. James.
Thank you, your worship, counsel. My name is Owen James. I appear today to voice my opposition to the proposed rezoning of Grant Street, of the Grant Street site. Context about me, I live and own the residence at fifteen fifty Kitchener Street. That's a residence immediately to the north and adjoining the subject site. I think because I live there, I bring a genuine perspective on this development. And I want to focus my remarks today on, on three points. The first is I want to speak about how the Grandview Woodland Community Plan mandates that site-specific characteristics be considered on any rezoning application. I want to then, as a second point, discuss how the site-specific characteristics are reason to dismiss this rezoning application, and, and that's a point that you'll recall has been raised last night and touched on again today, but I want to just summarize that and situate it in the context of this plan. There's been a lot of questions about this plan. And then I finally want to just touch down on the significance of the urban development panel's recommendations and how that factors for counsel at this stage. So I, I have the first PowerPoint slide. I just make the point here that while the plan does contemplate six-story rental buildings in the Britannia Woodlands subarea, it goes on to state quite clearly in, in page thirty-five there that this represents the maximum allowed, and owing to site-specific considerations, these figures may not be achievable in all circumstances. This, I say, reflects that general rezoning, the general rezoning contemplated by the plan in the immediate forty-two block area is not necessarily appropriate on every site in this subarea. So you've heard from a number of immediately affected neighbors of, of the three things that make this site unique. I consider it to be the realities of this, this rezoning application. First, it's located on one of the only two residential blocks in, in the forty-two block Britannia Woodlands subarea that does not have a lane separating it from the neighboring blocks. So from my perspective, that means no block between the site and to the north of it, Kitchener Street. It sits on the only two residential blocks in the same area, which are ninety-nine feet deep rather than the one-twenty standard, and it sits on one of only two blocks which has a significant grade change in both the east and west, north-out, north-south directions. So turning to the plan, here's what the plan says about the typical site. You'll see there, and this, this comes from page eighty of the plan, that on the typical site, you'd have six stories. You'd have, if you can see there, the depth, a hundred-and-twenty-foot depth. Obviously, on, on this site, the ninety-foot, that's going to cut it back quite significantly, and you would see how that would affect that plan on the top diagram. And then the plan also provides at page eighty a cross-section of how these buildings, or the zoning contemplated in, in the plan, would, would mix with other buildings that, that front higher arterial streets. You see there that there's a rendition of the middle being east-first, higher-density buildings kind of beside that main artery, and then, and then smaller buildings, although with a potential, obviously, to be upzoned. What you can see is in the plan there, you have a lane, you have the longer lot, and therefore you have sightlines, you have access to daylight, and you have a general kind of workable, and I think more pleasant space because you have access to that, that space. The reality on this site, I say, is very different at being in a typical site. So three things have been, I've taken that diagram from the Grandview Woodland Plan and made three adjustments to reflect why, why this site's unique. First, if, if you adjust for the, the shorter depth of the site, the buildings are compressed kind of on this right and left-right, they're brought in closer. You then take out the laneway, and again, it's, it's even closer. And then assuming that the building to the right is, well, on this, the building to the right represents residences on Kitchener, it then has to drop down, and, and so you see that, that, that aspect or trajectory that would have allowed for light and, and livability in, in the buildings is, is impacted. I, I say this, this unique site also does impact on character streetscapes. That's been discussed today. The plan recognizes throughout heritage value and character streetscapes, and I provide some references for the plan there. And, and I say, in, in considering this, this rezoning application, you, you, when you take into account that it's mid-block and it's not along an arterial route, it, it really is adversely affecting character streetscapes and, and, and in a maximum way because it's leaving orphaned houses on, on, on its side of Grant Street to the north and south. It's impacting houses on the other side of Grant Street to the south, and, and it's also, as, as you've heard from my neighbors, impacting properties on Kitchener Street.
Thanks so much. Yep, you're at your five minutes.
I'll stop there then.
Thanks, and I don't see any questions for you, so thank you very much for coming in this evening. We have Stephanie Langford, number thirty- Number 35, Speaker 35, Stephanie Langford. Okay, Nathan Davidovich. Thanks for coming in tonight, and we’ll just lower the podium for you. And up to five minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. I’m listed under other concern about this rezoning, so I’m not either for or against per se, but I was just looking at the Grandview Woodlands 2016 plan and sort of tried to compare it with the Marple plan. And if we look at the Marine Drive station, what happened there over the last 10 years since the Kandahar line started, and we look at Broadway and Commercial Station, after 33 years of the Expo line and 17 years of the Millennium Line, you almost have nothing. And it just doesn’t make any sense of, you know. So yes, we do need more rental housing, of course, and you know what they’ve done in Marple? Even the housing cooperative agreed to sell to a developer and rebuild a high-rise, and then they move back after the high-rises. And I mean, that’s the right way to do around transit stations. You need that type of a density, you know. Up until the mid-1950s, there was an interurban and bus service on First Avenue, which is the major arterial closer to Grant. And, of course, it was discontinued, as everything else was done in the 50s. Back in 1985, when Vancouver City Council requested the bus service on First Avenue be returned, and BC Transit back then approved it, and they even put signs in the buses. Unfortunately, the provincial government of the day froze the transit operating and capital budget, and BC Transit had no money to put the bus service on. Now, we have TransLink and the city engineering department who are against the First Avenue bus. And, you know, I mean, they had an opportunity even last year to construct the bus stops because we had a gas line replacement on First Avenue, and they haven’t done that. You know, how do we get people to Brentwood on the east and to Main Street, Science World Station, and the Pacific Central Station on the west, and now the new St. Paul Hospital is going to come there? How are they going to get there? The only direct route is First Avenue. Everybody knows that. You want them all to drive when we have a climate emergency? And, you know, and I mean, we have to be serious about that, and trying to—how are we going to increase our mode split to 66% by 2030 unless we put more bus service on the road? You know, buses carry 2/3 of the passengers, and the Skytrain and the Seabus and the West Coast Express only carry 1/3. So we need to get more buses. I mean, that’s the only way in the city. I mean, we can’t have, you know, a Skytrain everywhere, and so we need the bus service, and that would, you know, bring back the community to what they had before, and it’s really tragic that we don’t have that bus service on First Avenue. And as development increases, of course, the demand for transportation would increase, and there’d be—I mean, this is the beginning, a five-story, but, you know, I’m sure there’d be more of these types of rezoning as time goes by, and Grandview Woodlands will catch up one day to Marine Drive Station or to Marple in density, but it’s going to be a while. Well, thank you.
Thanks very much, and there’s no questions for you? There are questions? Point of—okay, thanks very much.
Question, but my computer’s not working.
Oh, I see, okay.
Yeah.
Sure. Go ahead, I’ll just run you from the public timer. Please, you have a question.
It’s not working. Thank you, Mr. Davidovich, for being here. I just—I just want to follow up, because you said at the outset that you’re not speaking for or against this current proposal, and of course, it’s a public hearing, and so we’re having to determine whether we should support this or not this evening. I’m just curious—you brought in the tie-in around transportation and public transit. That area of Grandview Woodlands is very well-served in terms of currently, in public transit, in terms of buses, all around commercial and Hastings. And I’m not saying it can’t be improved, because you and I have talked about transportation broadly, but I’m just curious about your perspective of this development and proposal in the context of the current public transit that is offered there, because obviously there’s a consideration that goes into this and is considered in the Grandview Woodlands Plan, so if you could speak to that maybe more specifically?
Well, I mean, the area is served, you know, by bus service on Clark Drive and on Commercial Drive, but I spoke at the Detox rezoning, and I told them—they didn’t even have a proposal to have a bus stop outside the Detox on First Avenue, you know. It just—you know, like, they don’t seem to know that we need that bus service. It’s been the priority of city council since 1985, and it will complement the existing north-south bus service by having an east-west bus service to connect with everything, and, you know, and so, you know, we can’t just have north-south buses going. We need east-west, and there’s nothing between Broadway and Hastings. So First Avenue is the main arterial there, and that’s—as I said, it had bus service before, and interurbans, everything, so we need to push for that somehow, but I mean, when we have the city engineering department against it, even, you know, like, that’s —and the planning department not saying anything at all, you know, then we have a bit of a problem here, when the staff is not even bringing to council what previous motions council already passed, you know?
Okay. Thank you. Appreciate that. Thanks for coming.
Thanks for coming in. That’s it for questions. Okay, so I have no more speakers on the formal list, and so I am going to move to call for speakers from the audience. Is there anyone else who would like to speak to this application? If you do want to speak, please come up and state your name, and you’ll have up to five minutes, and you may have questions. Please go ahead, sir.
Good evening, Mayor and council. My name is Jason Del Vicario. I’m born and raised Vancouverite, and I live in east Vancouver near Clark Park with my wife and four young boys. While I don’t live directly within the border of Grandview Woodlands, I’m not far away, and I felt compelled to come to speak this evening after listening to the public input from Thursday’s hearing from my home. I think we all recognise that Vancouver is facing a crisis-level situation on available, affordable, attainable housing. Most days when we pick up the paper, there is a front-page story on the issue of local housing affordability. In order to begin to address this challenge of housing, we know change and bold visionary decisions are required, as the status quo over the last decade has not kept up with demand or product offering. I commend staff and council on their recently adopted policies to incite new rental housing across the city. I think the Grandview Woodlands Plan includes bold new policies to introduce badly-needed rental housing, not just on major transit routes, but also in neighbourhood settings. We heard reasons last week why this particular site is not right for the location for new multifamily rental housing, a comment that was delivered mostly by immediate, single-family neighbours. Sure, there will be impacts on immediate neighbours, such as increase in vehicle and pedestrian traffic, loss of trees, but there will also be benefits, including secure housing for 35 new households, as well as new trees. Given the current build-out of our city, it will be near impossible to find a site to deliver new rental housing where immediate neighbours won’t be affected. There will always be challenges with every single new development site. This is where we need to rely on the expert work of the opinion of the city staff to require modifications to a building that balance the impact on the neighbourhood with overall city need and council goals and priorities. From what I can see and based on staff recommendation, this applicant has worked with the city staff and the community for nearly three years to accommodate neighbourhood concerns where possible, while also delivering the housing needed to keep up with the city—sorry—to keep our city healthy, vibrant, and resilient. Finally, it doesn’t seem to me that the question is, do we want single-family housing or a five-story rental building? This site is already zoned RM4, which allows multifamily strata homes, and similar impacts to the neighbours with additional cars and likely loss of a couple of trees. It seems to me the question is, will we allow a bit more heightened density as envisioned by under the Grandview Plan in order to deliver more affordable, accessible product for the average Vancouverite? This seems like an easy answer to me. Lastly, I want to give some anecdotal evidence how this type of development can work. I live very close to one of the very first purpose-built rentals at 15th and Knight. There was heavy opposition to this development from my neighbours, citing many of the same reasons as the opponents to this project, and I’m adhered today as a testament that this was not a blockbuster. It did not destroy the fabric of our neighbourhood. Rather, it has given my kids more friends to play with. They installed a Shaw bike-sharing station in front, and it’s been, without a question, a net positive to our neighbourhood. I urge council to make the right decision, moving Vancouver to a slightly more affordable and resilient city, and to support this project. Thank you.
Thanks for coming in. You have questions from Councilor Kirby Young?
Hi, thanks for being here. You live in a single-family home yourself?
I do, yes.
Right, okay. But you are here supporting a rental project. You also mentioned you had four boys, so thank you for finding the time to come.
Yes.
I’m sure it’s busy. Do you worry if projects like this are not coming into stream, that your boys are not going to have somewhere to live?
Yeah, frankly, I do. I mean, when I graduated from high school, I went to UBC. I rented—I’ve rented for—I’m 43-years-old—for the first 10 years of my life. You know, there’s just no way possible that my four boys will be able to afford to buy something in Vancouver, so they will, in fact, be renting. So yes, that is a concern of mine for sure.
Okay. Thanks for being here. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councilor Frye also has a question for you, so don’t go away. Thanks. Okay, go ahead, Councilor Frye.
Yeah, and thank you for coming to speak, and I do appreciate, you know, you evoking the importance of family housing and how this is potentially appropriate housing for families, and it’s great that they’re targeting those three-bedroom units. My question for you, though, is—are you familiar with the Grandview Woodlands Community Plan?
I am fairly familiar with it, yes.
Okay, so as you’re aware, then, there’s—when they talk about the public benefits, and when we extract public benefits through growth in the form of developer cost levies, which in this case are being waived, one of the priority targets for those DCLs, as we call them, one of the priorities is for childcare. And in fact, they very specifically identify the issues with childcare in Grandview Woodlands compared to other neighbourhoods in the city of Vancouver. Families in Grandview Woodlands are more likely to face challenges associated with single-parenting and low income. A higher proportion of children in this neighbourhood are also considered vulnerable compared to Vancouver as a whole. So, when we consider adding housing for higher-income folks and the scarcity of resources, those public benefits for childcare, how do we reconcile the costs? Do you think this will have an impact on childcare spaces that we don’t have and we’re not going to be funding through this project?
Right, so it’s my understanding that the DCL is waived in exchange for the rents being lower than what the market would bear. So, it seems to me that, you know, the developer would be taking a present-value calculation of the delta between the rents that are agreed upon in this project versus the market rents, and then they balance that in relation to the DCL, and then they make the decision to waive the DCL or not. You know, the one that was recently approved on Fraser Street Strand had a, you know, paid a DCL. They chose to pay the DCL. They could have waived it and had a lower rents of $2.4 million. So, you know, on a project-by-project basis, I think, you know, sometimes the DCL will be waived, sometimes it won’t, and, you know, certainly childcare is obviously a concern.
And, okay, so you’re also aware that the Britannia Woodlands subarea specifically was identified as having some of the most affordable rental housing in the entire Grandview Woodlands Plan, and a lot of them are well below-market. As pointed out on page 74 of the plan—I mean, not that you would know what page it’s on, but—do you get that sense of the Britannia Woodlands subarea?
I’m not sure I quite understand the question. I think that—
Just that there’s the most—some of the most affordable rental housing in all of the Grandview—in all of the Grandview Plan is located in the Britannia Woodlands area that we’re talking about here.
Okay.
Okay.
Sure. Thank you.
Thanks.
Okay, that’s it for questions. Thanks very much for coming in. Anybody else want to speak? Thanks for coming, and up to five minutes whenever you’re ready.
All right. Okay. Good evening, Mayor Stewart and the council. My name is Noni Marler. I’m here to offer my support for the proposal of the new secured rental housing here on Grant Street. I grew up in Vancouver. I went to school in Vancouver, and like many of my friends, I moved abroad. And for my younger years, I went and I worked abroad, and I had a bunch of work experience. Having recently relocated from London last year, I can tell you firsthand experience that there are limited options for quality rental housing in Vancouver, period. And more so if you prefer not to live in the downtown peninsula. This new project is exactly the type of housing that I was looking for when I returned home to Vancouver, and there are many others like me. Council, as you are no doubt aware, Vancouver is facing a housing crisis, which affects our ability to attract and retain working professionals. With home ownership—or while home ownership is out of reach for the majority of people at this point, certainly in my career, people are living and working in Vancouver, and with the vacancy rates at near zero, it’s becoming increasingly challenging for residents to access quality, secured rental housing in the city. The result is many people who work in Vancouver, including professionals who earn good wages, are forced to commute over an hour to support our economy, or they take up the older, more affordable local units and push those out who cannot afford to compete on rents. I understand the city of Vancouver has a globe—sorry—a goal of delivering 16,000 new purpose-built rental homes over the next 10-year period to simply keep pace with demand. Well-designed policy-compliant projects like this should be a no-brainer, and I hope that you will vote to advance this project this evening.
Thanks very much. I don’t see anybody on the list for questions, but thanks for coming in. Anybody else wish to speak? Great, clerks, you might have to raise the—there we go.
Oh, yeah. This is great.
Great, thanks for coming in. Up to five minutes, please.
Hi, Mayor and council. My name is Sage Brocklebank. I’m speaking in support of this project. For the last year or so, I’ve been the property manager and kind of the maintenance guy on the four houses on Grant Street, so I’ve gotten to know the tenants really well. I’m also a longtime resident of the Commercial Drive area. I’ve lived there for probably seven of the last 10 years. Love the neighbourhood. It’s one of my favourite neighbourhoods in Vancouver, the sense of community, the coffee shops, delis, et cetera. I also recognise that it’s a neighbourhood that doesn’t usually like change. And this has been a really fascinating process. I was here last Thursday as well, hearing everything that everyone has said, and just kind of learning what the community values. And I think what occurs for me is that of the options on the table right now, because the developer has bought this particular lot, it’ll either become a four-story condo or market-based housing. And there’s definitely a need for affordable housing in Vancouver, but I’ve been on Craigslist a lot in the last few weeks, and I’m in the business of renting properties, and there’s almost nothing available in Commercial Drive. And there’s a lot of places on Commercial Drive that there’s a family that’s looking for a home. You’re looking at like a two-bedroom is starting at like $2,200, going up to $3,500. Like, there’s really not a lot available in the market. So what occurs for me is that this would be a huge benefit to the neighbourhood, to have something like this in the neighbourhood. What else did I want to say? Yeah, that’s about it.
Okay, thanks very much for coming in. I don’t see any questions for you, but I appreciate your time this evening. Anybody else wish to speak to this? So they’re making their way to the mic. Thanks for coming in, and up to five minutes whenever you’re ready.
Okay. Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of council. My name is Devon Hasek, and I’d like to take a brief moment to express how sorry I am that you had to endure the implied threats of violence a week ago. There are those of you I strongly support, those of you who I passionately disagree with, and sometimes this changes day to day. However, I never forget that by serving in this role, you were sacrificing many things. I greatly respect all of you for it, even when you don’t vote to extend a meeting. Like you, I deeply care about this neighbourhood, which is why, despite missing my opportunity to speak by mere seconds on Thursday night, I’ve returned tonight. Admittedly, I’m sure there are other ways we could—we would both prefer to spend these evenings, even with this weather. Frankly, I’m not even sure why we’re really here, as the Grandview— As the Grandview Woodland community plan isn't that old, it actually allows for a larger building than was proposed. I understand that some don't feel comfortable with that small change, but to me, it's a far better option than the four-story strata building allowed under the existing zoning. I say that as a homeowner, because I have neighbors, friends, and family who are renters and are struggling to stay in our city. These people deserve better than to be sunk into basement suites or crammed into shared, single-family homes. I understand that a couple of people here have lived through that situation before these homes were bought for redevelopment. And I know how horrible it is to be evicted from personal experience. So I'm thankful the compensation they will receive is actually higher than the minimum you've recently increased. As last Tuesday night proved, when we say no to incremental changes, like going from allowing four floors to five, we end up hurting real people and the character of our community. More than that, we hurt our future. As in our climate emergency, it's foolish to pretend these fossil fuel error structures are capable of addressing this crisis. In contrast, allowing people to live in a passive house building in our city instead of commuting in their cars for hours is a step in the right direction. Which is why I think the parking proposed here is perfect for this location. I also know that service vehicles aren't going anywhere, anywhere either, which is why I'm glad to see there are plans to create a lay-in way here to get them off the street. In the short term, I wonder if these blocks could be improved if your staff examined whether we offered too many incentives for cars to park on the road while their garages are used for storage. Admittedly, I don't have a professional background in this, so let's not mention your opinion. Yet even I can see the muted appearance of this fourth version of the project blends in better with the block. Though without the building model in front of us, I don't think I will be able to see its fifth floor, and I doubt the shadows will be noticeable either. The difference in shadows, sorry. It's clear the applicant has taken both the words of your staff and advisory panel to heart, even though the latter proposed a previous version of the proposal without giving any advice. I'm sure that disregard for the years of community consultation that led to the area plan must pain those of you who truly value community feedback. It's a shame that after spending so long laying out this vision, we are again torn apart as we rehash these same old arguments. I understand that like the neighborhood, that like neighborhoods, there needs to be tweaks and changes in the plan to respond to the real world. But I don't think anyone really believes that Vancouver's rental housing crisis is eased, let alone ended. So I'm glad the consensus was to limit the pace of change here. My understanding is that only one more project like this will be permitted before all of you will have to decide whether you'll allow more. As our representatives, we ask a great deal of you. You're not here to simply tally the opinions in the room, but rather to weigh them, along with the needs expressed by those who couldn't be here tonight, and even those who are yet to be born. When you consider that, along with the benefits of this application, I believe, like me, you'll still be left wondering if this was really the best way you could have spent your evening. I also think you'll join me in support of this application. Thank you again for your public service and for your time.
Thanks very much, and there's no questions. So appreciate you coming in this evening. Anybody else like to speak to this application? I'm going to call again, second call. Anybody else want to speak to this application on Grant? And last time. Okay, so that's three calls. So seeing there are no speakers, now we'll close the speakers list. And I believe we've received fewer no comments after 5:00 PM today, so we'll close the receipt of public comments and move on to hearing closing comments. So, does the applicant have any closing comments? Great, and just to remind council, we had our opportunity to ask questions to the applicant earlier, so this is just to hear the comments. We can ask questions to staff, though.
Thank you, Your Worship and council, for allowing us to provide you with some closing comments. There were a few comments that came out through the public hearing, and some of the speakers seemed a little bit confused on some of the items, and I'd sort of like to start off by clarifying. First one is height and setback in the existing RM4 zone. Several speakers mentioned that the height, maximum height in RM4 is 35 feet. That's actually incorrect. That maximum outright height in RM4 zone is 35 feet. The height is actually relaxable to the discretion of the Director of Planning. Typically, in the neighborhood, for multifamily projects, it's relaxed to four stories. And that's why the entire neighborhood, wherever you see multifamily projects, they are over 35 feet, and they're typically four stories for multifamily projects. The other is the rear yard setback. I'm afraid I'm going to have to disagree with my colleague, Mr. Dove. The setback, once again, in RM4, the outright setback is 35 feet. However, up to seven, according to section 4.6.3 of the district schedule, a section of 7.3 meters is allowed to be extended into that rear yard setback by three meters, which is the 10 feet which he's talking about. So it's actually a 25-foot setback in RM4. Some people raised some concerns regarding energy performance. Please rest assured that this building will be a near-net-zero building in conformance with the city of Vancouver Green Buildings Policy for rezonings, inclusive of green roof. This isn't an option for us. We have to meet this requirement, and we want to meet this requirement. So this will be performed as required. Tree retention. One of the speakers raised a large comment about the large elm tree, a 79-foot elm tree on Grant Street. We actually worked quite hard with our arborists to retain this tree. If you look at our below-grade parking structure, we've worked around the root structure for this building, we, sorry, for this elm tree. This tree is, we believe, one of the nicest trees on the street. It's an asset for both our building and the community at large, and we have every intent and we have every belief that we should be able to retain it as part of this project. Character streetscapes, that's been brought up a lot this evening. There are 15 identified character streetscapes within the Grandview Woodlands plan. Councillor Carr, you asked where it can be found. If you look in the Heritage section of the Grandview Woodlands plan, there's a map there identifying all 15 of these. Neither Kitchener Street nor Grant Street are considered these. This is defined term quantified by the Heritage Department of the city of Vancouver. If either of these streets were considered that, had been that, we would not be bringing this project forward. They are not, so we have come forward. I'd like to address some of these troubling renderings that some people have been presenting. We were quite disturbed to see some of the renderings that were brought up by some of the opponents of this project. I'm going to be speaking with my professional association about some of the aspects of that. However, we were disturbed enough by those to, after our last meeting on Tuesday, to go back to our office and take a really close look at that and double-check our numbers and double-check our math. We provided the city with some actual correct renderings. Our renderings are subject to checking by city staff. They're created with the legal survey documents in there, and they're not nearly as alarming as those, I believe, to be misleading renderings that were presented to you earlier tonight and last Tuesday. Also, people mentioned that the plan assumed flat, standard lots. Again, I'll disagree with my colleagues on that one. I don't see anything in the plan that says that. You know, to suggest that means that the city didn't do their job in creating this plan. I'm quite sure that the city staff considered topography of the neighborhood when developing their plan, and had they considered this not appropriate for rezonings to this scale, they would likely have blanked this section out under this policy. This is a challenging lot, there's no doubt about it. But that's why our proposal is five stories, where the plan envisioned six stories. And we're proposing 2.1 FSR, or 2.19 FSR, where the plan envisions 10, or 2.4 FSR. We've done our absolute best to work with all stakeholders to hear concerns, adapt our proposal, and bring before you today what we believe is a great project for the community and the city. The existing RM4 zone is a multifamily zone, where we routinely see four-story typologies through the discretion afforded the Director of Planning. I would argue that exchanging some density in one partial floor for 35 secured rental units, inclusive of family townhouses, is great value for the community and the city. Council has, in the past, expressed their unease with spot rezonings based on citywide policies. That's why you've commissioned a citywide plan to give direction to the densification that we can all agree must occur. I think that it's important to point out that this proposal is not a proposal based on a citywide policy. Rather, it's a proposal based on a specific community plan. City staff spent nearly half a decade, meeting with residents, holding workshops, studying the neighborhood, and coming up with a direction for the Grandview Woodlands area. This is that direction. I understand that some people were unhappy with aspects of the plan, but no plan will ever satisfy everyone, and we shouldn't relitigate community plans with every application. The Grandview Woodlands community is eclectic by its very nature. That's what makes it so engaging. Nowhere else in the city do you see such interesting juxtapositions of typology, scale, and style. In fact, the plan itself specifically calls for a variety of building heights and scales. They look for and celebrate these staccato moments as you move along the street. The pace of change regulations limit the number of developer-initiated rezonings in the entire planned area to five in the first three years. This is one of those five. The pace of change eliminates the possibility that the entire neighborhood, that entire neighborhoods will change overnight, and eliminates the notion of precedent-setting, such has been suggested by many speakers. This is a good project in a good neighborhood, which for once provides more rental opportunities somewhere other than on an arterial road, arterial road, pardon me. Somewhere where children can actually play. This council has demonstrated an understanding of the dire need for more family rental in our city. We ask that council please apply the same decision-making process to our project, that you afford us the opportunity to bring forward more rental opportunities in the Grandview Woodlands neighborhood. And I believe Mr. MacLeod would like to speak to a couple of the affordability issues that were raised.
Good evening, Mayor Stewart, councillors. Thank you for your attention to details, questions, and feedback during this process. To follow up on displacement, I know there was some discussion around that on Thursday. And we have met with the Housing Department since Thursday's public hearing, and we have decided to clearly define a process in which all tenants in the current houses and at the time of the rezoning application will not only have the right of first refusal in the new building, but also add a 20% discount to the rents that are being set. With this rezoning application, we are also making a commitment to provide housing that considers affordability. We know we can't solve affordability, but with the rents that are being set, as per the rental incentive program in the city, we are considering it and trying to help. This project will not create a development windfall. Economic returns are projected to be realized over the long run, as is often the case when comparing rental versus for-sale housing. We have worked to be able to make contributions towards sustainability while maintaining the project's feasibility. As of right now, we see two separate paths toward a development permit for the properties. One path is to build under the RM4 zoning bylaw up to four stories, and the other is to build five stories of purpose-built rental as per the community plan. We made a decision in late 2016 to commit to the second path, and to follow the process to design and provide purpose-built rental that works for everyone. A process that has been inclusive and communicative since the beginning, and has resulted in an application that has considered everyone's input and feedback, for which we are grateful to have received. We believe the purpose-built rental path is by far the most beneficial option for the street, neighborhood, and future residents of Britannia Woodland. We also have the utmost confidence in the city planning team to ensure a development permit will continue to take the neighborhood into consideration every step of the way. We are dedicated to making this application a reality for the residents who will live there in the beginning, and for those who come for many, many years ahead. Mayor Stewart, councillors, we ask you to support this rezoning application and approve the opportunity to provide new housing choices for renters and the long-term benefits that will result for all of Vancouver. Thank you.
Thank you for the closing comments. Does staff have any closing comments?
Good evening, Mayor and council. I'm saying senior rezoning planner. Staff do like to make some closing remarks. We want to thank everybody for coming out to speak tonight and last Thursday night. We listened attentively, and especially for the residents along Kitchener Street. I think I have never seen so many apartment presentation in a rezoning public hearing before. So there's a lot of thoughts and professional expertise that went into your comments. I wanted to just, actually just, address some of the questions, and I will have to pass it to other of my colleagues to address that. But I think that really is a good closing remark. So we have four questions about the Grandview Woodland plan. Did Citizen Assembly recommend against RM4/6-story zoning, rental zoning in the plan? Second question, could the whole RM4 area ended up with six-story rental buildings? Does the plan say anything about mid-block projects with single-family homes? And where and how the character streetscape cluster defined? Are there any specific clusters in the plan? And where are they? And other, some other documents, or some other document? Sorry, thank you. The community plan process was informed by a number of considerations, including citywide policy, technical analysis, substantial community engagement, as well as the work of the Citizens Assembly. It is really important to note that the Citizens Assembly, their role was never to write the plan. Rather, they function as a representative body whose task was to provide recommendation to staff and to the city. And with regards to the apartment zone area, I think, I think, and this area, this site is part of that. I think it's, simply put it, there is a three-pronged policy approach to the apartment zone area. The first one is recognizing that there are a lot of existing affordable rental building in the area, albeit very old, but they do provide affordable rental housing options. And so the plan puts in place a pace of change policy. So that's for the first five, first three years of the plan, only five project can be approved. And staff is in the middle of doing the analysis, and will report back to council towards the end of this year on the progress of that, and how the pace of change is implemented. The second prong is that the plan gives rental housing a leg up. So under RM4 zone, you can already build a four-story rental. And then for the past two decades, we have seen rental buildings. We haven't seen any rental buildings, sorry. We have seen condo buildings, no rental buildings. So it's, I think this is an issue that's also identified by the Citizens Assembly. And albeit that they support the four-story development, they wanted to encourage rental as well. So when staff recommended that to, we would give rental building four, two additional stories, there was overwhelming support from the Citizens Assembly. I think it was 85% support. So that's the second piece of policy, is to help with the rental economics, which otherwise would not be viable. And then the third thing is the character streetscape policy, which I think noting that there is really considerable attention as well as policy focus on conserving character and heritage buildings in the RT5 area of the community, which is east side of Commercial Drive.[1711.22] Drive. The plan process, the community really wanted to ensure that there are some elements within the apartment zone area that they're of heritage, they're of architectural heritage, and they're character buildings, and they should also be retained. So that's the separate character streetscape policy that was developed, which called out these 15 streetscapes in the Granville Woodland apartment areas. And these sites are clearly identified on the map that accompany the written policy. And in identifying streetscapes, staff have consulted with the city's Heritage Register, which 1,500 Granville Street block is not listed. There are no listed houses. We reviewed the places of historic interest that was identified by a third-party heritage consultant retained as part of the Granville Woodland planning process. Again, 1,500 Grant Street block, there is no identified places of interest that might be considered for addition to the register. Staff undertook a staff-led street-by-street assessment of built form in the apartment areas, and we selected key character streetscapes, sorry, that were A, a minimum of four properties, B, supported by existing register or consultancy work, and C, were exemplary and representative of period architecture. So this is really the third piece of the policy for the apartment zone is really just to have incremental change, I think that's mentioned many times, and have incremental change at a very moderate pace while keeping some of the valuable heritage buildings in the area. And council had the final say, I think that's through individual rezoning, through the pace of change policy review. So that's it. Could the whole RM4 area end up with six-story rental building? I think that's a good question. When we did, when staff did the economic analysis, the testing during the plan phase, we think even with six-story rental housing, the project economic was very, very marginal. And the likely candidate probably would be existing houses that are secondary rental, not purpose-built rental, such as this one. But I think also the uptake hasn't been that great. I think we have four applications within rental building projects. We have five, we have five, but we haven't really have the significant uptake, which speaks to the challenge and then the challenging economics. The plan that, I'm responding to this question, that plan talk about anything, mid-block projects with single-family homes. By single-family homes, I'm assuming you're talking about the houses which could have multiple dwelling uses. I think we do look at this as RM4-zoned area, they're not single-family home area, and know the plan does not have any specific policy about restricting mid-block development. In fact, I'm not aware of, the city has any policy citywide. What we do have is what we call orphaned lot policy. We want to make sure that we do not, we do not, you know, put closure on future development potential of adjacent lots. So that's that. And I think just to answer the question, just to respond to some of the speakers, we, staff have done a very thorough analysis, looking at the survey plan, looking at the grade change, and looking at the elevational dimensions. And we really, we can't really verify some of the graphics we've seen through the speakers. And what we can say, what's important to note is that we know that this is a very challenging site with the adjacent houses and with a sloping site, and that's why entire floor has been dropped from the project through the application review process. I think, you know, while the policy allows six, so for rental project, this, I wanted to just stress that this is, this is by no mean insignificant offering gesture of this project to be neighborly, to have a better contextual fit at the loss of some rental units, which I think, which we think is the right thing to do in this case. So with that, I do have a couple of transportation-related questions, and I'll ask Ms. Draskovic to answer those, and then, you know, have Ms. Dunnet finish off.
Hi, I'm Ms. Draskovic for Transportation. There were a couple of transportation-related questions received. The first was, was there a transportation study on access and egress on this narrow street? There wasn't an independent traffic study submitted with this application. However, Transportation Engineering Staff through the rezoning process did review this application for anticipated impacts to traffic congestion, safety, as well as access, and no concerns were identified through that review. I'll note that the site is in close proximity to transit, as well as cycling infrastructure, as well as four PBS public bike share stations, all within approximately five-minute walk of this site. So staff do not anticipate any significant vehicle trip generation, given the use and scale of this development sufficient that would be considered to cause any sort of meaningful impact on the surrounding roadway network. I'll also note that in terms of trip generation, the application is anticipated to generate approximately 10 to 15 trips in the peak hour. That's considered very nominal, again, not considered to make any sort of meaningful impact on the roadway operations or safety, access or egress. The second question received was, have solutions around garbage pickup bin developed? So current garbage operations for this block are, for a once-weekly pickup for all waste, residents are required to remove the bins as soon as collection has happened and that the bins are emptied. So this is once a week, given the limited timeframe that bins are permitted on the street, again, staff do not anticipate any sort of significant impacts to the overall availability of parking on street. That said, staff will continue to work with the applicant through the DP process to further mitigate any impacts to the street through the garbage collection, through the design process.
Thanks very much.
Alison Dunnet, Senior Planner, Affordable Housing. We've been monitoring the questions that council members have asked, so I'll try to be very quick in recapping. Four points. First, questions around tenants and displacement, what's here and how will the tenants be supported? What type of housing is coming, the affordability of it, and does it serve a need of renting Vancouverites? So very first, on the tenant displacement, we have previously described the site, but I'll just recap for council. There are seven units on site, two are eligible for the TRP. The rents range from a low of $1,200 for a one-bedroom basement to $3,000 for a two-bedroom entire house. So to the question asked by the council member about affordability, this is unsecure secondary rental in homes in the Grandview Woodland area. And due to that, we see the higher rents than you would see in the average overall for Grandview Woodland, which contains a lot of older secured market rental housing, where we see lower rents due to people being able to reside in their homes for a long time. The applicant, in their closing comments, referred to a conversation they've had with staff since the beginning of the public hearing, and they are now offering a 20% right of first refusal to all units on site. And just to be very specific, they were required to do that for two of the units. For the additional five, they are offering a first refusal to all of the tenants of the five remaining ineligible units. Many of those units include tenants who are subleasing in roommate arrangements, as we often see in these kinds of houses, and they will have the opportunity to either take a right of first refusal as a group to come back into a three-bedroom unit, or they could come back in a single-bedroom unit. And we've drafted some language that we would recommend council secure as an amendment to the yellow memo to ensure that that's secured. And we would be very supportive of that. It meets the intent of the new tenant relocation policy, which is about ensuring both protection for tenants and support, and also trying to encourage tenants to have the opportunity to come back to a site where they have lived previously. So this is rental housing, it's market rental housing. It is part of the entire Granville Woodlands plan, as Jan has mentioned. And so there is social cooperative, supportive, other housing initiatives as part of our housing strategy in this neighborhood, and this is very much intended to meet a segment of the market. So to the point of affordability and who could afford these rents, I've already described the existing rents are quite high compared to the average already. In the new units, I will just walk you through how staff in Housing Vancouver, based on data, have analyzed the affordability. So looking at a one-bedroom unit, what's proposed is approximately $1,900 a month. That is affordable at our very base 30% of income calculation. That is a very kind of growth stick, but we need to use something. So a household earning $70,000 a year, that's a household, could afford to rent that apartment. That could be one single teacher from the neighborhood, or that could be an educational assistant and construction worker, a couple sharing that one bedroom. For the two-bedroom, the price is $2,500 a month, and that would require a minimum of a $90,000 household income. That, we've looked at stats for Vancouver, and that could be, you know, a bus driver and an IT professional, and so forth. The three-bedroom rents were $3,250 approximately, and a household income of $125,000 would be needed. That could be a public administrator, a nonprofit executive director, university professor, a couple earning that would have a more than adequate income to rent that unit. I think to the question of affordability and who this housing can serve, as we've described in Housing Vancouver, the important metric to compare this group to is what people can afford to purchase if they were to move into ownership housing. If somebody living in a one-bed who earns $70,000 wanted to purchase an east side one-bedroom home, they would need $120,000 of household income or a $50,000 bump. So we often describe that as ladder rungs and how much more they would need to grab the next rung. For the two-bed, 90 would move to $160,000 of household income or an additional $70,000. And from the $125,000 household income that you would need for the three-bed, you would need $230,000 or approximately an additional $100,000 of income. When we look at what households in Vancouver will be served by this, we find, looking at the 2015 census data, that particularly among family households, those earning over $50,000 make up about 69% of our renting households. Those making over 80 make up 46%. And of our general all-household types, approximately 50% are earning over $50,000 a year household income. So the other last aspect we would just drive home about need and unmet demand is the vacancy rate, which in this neighborhood is 0.4%, lower than the 0.8% in the citywide. Thank you.
Thanks very much. So council, of course, this is a section where we asked staff questions, so I have a bunch of folks here on the list. Then we would move the motion, and then we would move to debate where we wouldn't be able to ask staff questions. So if you have questions for staff, just ask them now. I have councillor Dijonova on the list, and up to five minutes, please.
Thanks very much. I do have questions for staff. In the yellow memo, I understand and I appreciate some of the comments back on language that I sent in, but it doesn't state that the, under the draft tenant relocation plan on page three of six of the yellow memo that was circulated, that the applicant has, in fact, met the city's relocation policy? My understanding that they have met the city's relocation policy. Is that correct? Just for the public record, I think it's important.
Thank you, councillor Dijonova. For the right of first refusal, I just want to check that specifically you're interested in that aspect or overall for the tenant relocation?
Overall, they've met.
Overall, they have met the requirements under the new policy, and they have exceeded them in the area of the right of first refusal.
And what I've heard from, thanks, what I've heard from, and sorry, I only have five minutes, I'm really trying to get through this. What I've heard from the applicant is they're willing to extend that to all five units, and that may be more than five families, in fact, that that could be roommates who have agreements, so that could amount to seven units, or if they wanted to move together again to a three-bedroom unit, one-bedroom unit, and that they would also work with them regarding the size and appropriate housing. Is that correct?
Yeah, in our discussions with the applicant today, we noted to them the high number of roommates sharing units in their housing that they're renting right now, and that continues to be a challenge for the tenant relocation plan, particularly if you have only one tenant on the rental agreement and the other two are invisible to that. So we asked the applicant if they would be willing to extend to those households the opportunity that they could either come back as a single, as a couple, as three, so that nobody is kind of dependent on the other person. That is quite a significant change for our policy, and I wouldn't want to suggest that that's something that every applicant could do. I think in particular, given the small number of impacted tenants and the greater gain we're getting on the site with rental units, it gives the applicant the ability to adjust and meet those needs.
Okay, thank you. And just going back in some of my notes from the previous evening and some of the questions from council members, I remember it being, can you do more to the applicant? So this is the applicant doing more. In fact, under our tenant relocation policy at the City of Vancouver, they only have to provide for the two units. So the five units, which may amount to actually more than five units, would be above and beyond our policy.
It is above and beyond, yeah.
Thank you. And one more question about affordable homeownership. So we have a city policy, I know you've heard me say it a million times, but we weren't able to move forward with that because of the charter change. But what I've heard from staff over two terms of presentations and 13 motions that I moved forward is that we can't even get to an affordable homeownership policy, or we can't implement our pilot because of the charter change. Recently, a charter change was received, BC Housing has a program, but this would serve that group that might be overhoused right now, perhaps, but they'd be able to move into more appropriate housing? Is that correct?
I wouldn't want to speak for the housing policy group, we know I'm doing a review of affordable homeownership, but when we did do analysis in the past, this was a segment similarly that we felt would be assisted. There is one project moving forward, the Tomo House project, which is the only affordable homeownership project we've done so far in rezoning.
Two units.
And my understanding is that is two, and that is moving forward.
Thank you very much. I'm just trying to understand the need that this would meet. Also have a question about the elm tree. I understand when I was Park Board Commissioner that there were a number of elm trees in the neighborhood that unfortunately did need to be replaced, and there were trees that were replanted. Even if, regardless of this project, the state of the elm tree does not change, and I am hoping staff can comment on whether or not it was considered a hazard. I know that we protect trees as much as we possibly can, so could you comment on that?
To councillor Dijonova, so the elm tree is actually one of the three-city trees, and the Arboretum has reviewed this and recommended retention, which city staff concur.
So city staff do concur with retention? Okay, so the elm tree will be saved, even though we had heard differing reports earlier?
Yes, the elm tree is one of the city trees. I think one of the other trees that was mentioned was a maple tree. That's on the northern lots, and it's also proposed to be retained. That's one of the neighboring ones.
Okay. I had heard the applicant specifically state elm, but I'm not allowed to ask some questions. Don't need to roll back the tape, good to know that a tree will be saved. Also, just wondering if staff could comment on this meeting, the Grandview Woodlands plan, and also as the first rental project, is my understanding, in the plan of this size and the scope?
I confirm that this is only application meets the intent of the Grandview Woodland plan. I do believe this is the second rental project, third rental project. We have, we have, sorry, I think this is actually number four. We have three others.
But if this size and the scope, it's the first of its, is it others are six-story, I understand?
Yeah, it's actually in our report.
Yes, that's where I pulled it from in my questions here.
Actually, we're just about six minutes.
Sorry, thank you.
Thanks. Okay, on councillor Kirby Young, please.
Hi, thank you. You addressed a couple of my questions, I appreciate that, on the sort of distinction between heritage clusters and the language that some of our speakers were using around character streetscape, and as well as the incremental growth and the pace of change. So a couple of remaining questions, and I just wanted to go back, and you touched on it briefly, but more around this notion of side street versus arterial that came up. And I know you spoke to sort of the mid-block aspect, but I'm just wondering if there's anything specifically identified in the plan for that? Because I was quite intrigued that we're actually bringing forward a rental project that's not on an arterial, but based on the feedback, what is the plan? Is there anything specific in the plan that speaks to side streets versus arterial for these permitted five projects in the three years?
Yeah, I think that's a really good question. I think a lot of the densification are targeted towards the arterial streets, Hastings, Nanaimo, Broadway. So this, you know, since 1930 has been our, sort of the core of the residential, the RM4 zone. So the densification of that on a very measured pace is actually something that the plan really, the plan really encourages.
I'm not sure I'm clear. So the plan encourages?
So because this is the, well, basically the incremental densification and renewal of the existing rental in the area, I think is really something that, you know, is alternative to densification along the arterial roads.
Okay, so is it fair to say, because I'm just trying to make sure I'm clear, that the plan is not specific around where these pace of change projects come forward, whether it's side street or arterial?
No, no, it's not. It's really capturing that any project that's replacing existing rental, whether it's purpose-built or secondary, so it could be along arterial.
Or it could.
It could be in the residential core area like this.
This particular project is not, it's, I guess, speaking to defining rental, we're talking about single-family home, is the defining rental in the plan more geared towards the specific purpose-built stock versus secondary non-secured rental?
I think it's the RM4. Basically, after the rental housing stock ODP was amended by council, purpose-built rental and secondary rental, when they're in the RM4 area, they're treated equally. It's, I'm not quite sure if I'm actually answering your question.
No, I don't think directly, but I think it, I think the answer is that the plan isn't very specific. That's what I'm taking away from that personally. But I'll move on just in the interest of time, which is, and just to kind of clarify something, so a couple of speakers had referred to the fact that they had seen projects like this in the past and that typically they, you know, an applicant might pass them and then convert them immediately over to market or condo or strata. But is it correct? Because I just want to make sure, I think having facts out there and common understanding is really important. And I'm looking at page 17 of the report, there is a covenant attached to this rental. So it says, for example, "The rental housing secured by a housing agreement and Section 219 covenant for the longer life of the building in 60 years," which still the applicant is required to retain this as rental.
Yes, absolutely. So there is a housing agreement and housing agreement by law which will be passed by council, presented to council. There also is a Section 219 covenant registered on title, making sure that for the life of a building or six years, whichever is longer, that this remain rental.
Okay, that's great. That's it for me, thank you.
Those are your questions? Okay, Counselor Dominado, questions for staff?
Thanks, Mayor, and thank you for the updates. A lot of my questions have been addressed through staff and the applicant, but I did want to follow up specifically on the streetscape conversation and the character homes and I did pull during the meeting the map that you referred to earlier. But there was a speaker who spoke last week and I made a note of it, where he indicated that the city was violating the Grandview Woodlands Plan and obviously it's our job to assess that everything is conforming to policy. And I just wondered if you could just speak to that again or elaborate on that, because I noted that section pulled out to review as well as the map. The map seemed pretty clear to me when I looked at it, but he used some fairly strong language and I just wondered if you could address that.
Yeah, so I can, I can address that question. I think really for the apartment zone areas, there was a strong, my understanding is that there was a strong community preference that represented, what's the word, representative elements of the Britannia Woodland architectural heritage worthy of retention be retained. So this was then the character streetscape policy then was developed in response to that community desire, understanding that this area has traditionally been multifamily residential area. In the 70s, a lot of rental building being built, but there's also a lot of houses as well. And then the, what I followed after that is this criteria developed by the community and staff, looking at block by block to see what would be those valuable heritage resources. And those were identified. And so then this area were subtracted from the six-story rezoning policy, so they're exempt from the rezoning policy and 1,500 Grand Street was not identified as a character streetscape.
Okay, thank you. And then just following on the questions, the applicant did their closing statements and, I'm sorry, just trying to grab my notes from that, and was, made a point of trying to address a number of points and concerns that had been raised last weekend as well as today. And I was trying to correct, I think, what they felt were some misrepresentations or disagreement on issues. I just wanted to confirm with staff, do you feel that was representative in terms of the clarifications and corrections that were made based on your assessment of the policies that are being applied in the plan? So I'm just looking for that, because I think they did make an attempt to address concerns and points where they think there was some disagreement or lack, so.
Yeah, I'll take a crack at this and then Susan Chang, Development Planner, may further answer that. I think what we have is we've done the analysis, our staff analysis, based on the survey plan and also based on the submission of the applicant's drawings. And I would say certainly some of the looming effect, the contrast of the, of the section drawings as well as the perspective seems not quite representative of what we have seen in the drawings, the applicant's drawings.
Okay.
Susan Chang, Development Planner. It's difficult to assess the accuracy of renderings, they're not dimensioned drawings. We have also received a submission by the proponent, a different version in terms of a rendering. However, I can state that based on dimensioned drawings, the height of the building is 56.7 feet to the top of parapet. And this is inconformant with the Grandview Woodland policy, plan, sorry.
No, thank you. And also the clarifications around setbacks as well, can you speak to that that was made?
Yes. So RM4 zoning rear yard setbacks does allow lesser setbacks if you have the massing set away from the side property lines and if it is within a certain width. So you can achieve a lesser than the 35-foot setback based on the building form. I would just state that irrespective of a 99-foot deep site or 120-foot deep site, the Grandview Woodlands Plan requires a consistent 20-foot setback.
Thank you, appreciate that.
Counselor, we have questions for staff.
Yeah, I have a few questions. In the, I guess first question, the Urban Design Panel went through twice and asked to be resubmitted. Why did it not go back a third time?
So I would reiterate that the Urban Design Panel is an advisory panel. They do not regulate where, if a project is approved or not. There were initial recommendations that were addressed and they did support height and the density. I think there was discomfort still, a remaining concern about contextual fit, and we will review this through the development permit process to specifically address it.
Okay, so it's great to hear that the contextual fit will be reviewed in the next process. Second component, in that UDP second meeting, the applicant noted that the client has decided to secure these units at below-market rates and will work hard on affordability. However, the market rates, the rents shown are actually above the average rates for the neighborhood. So I'm just wondering how you can determine that differential.
So just so that I'm clear, the question is, on the table in question is, on page 13, the average market rent seen in newer building eastside CMHC 2018 is actually lower than the DCL maximum. Is that the question? Yeah.
No, the question is, the proponent is asking for the DCL maximum, which is above the average rents for a new build in East Van. However, at the UDP, the applicant noted that the client has decided to secure these units at below-market rates and wants to work hard on affordability. So it clearly states that they were going to secure these units below-market rates.
I understand what you're reading from, it's notes from the UDP session. So it's quoting the applicant and comments they would have made about their application.
Yes.
Yes. And a market applicant would always describe a market rental project where they're providing units, using the DCL waiver and securing the rents and affordability as below-market. So they, because they are required to start the rents based on the DCL, they can't go higher than the DCL maximums, the rents that get secured today can only be adjusted based on RTA increases between now and opening. They're not free and unfettered to charge whatever the market may bear at the time of occupancy. So an applicant would describe that as below-market.
Okay, thank you. And then it was told that the three trees on site, that one would, the maple will stay. However, in the document, it says that all three trees will be removed on site.
That's correct. So the maple is actually on the northern lots, which is not a part of this project. It's the northern lot, just, I think it's about 15, I believe it's on Kitchener. Yeah, that's correct. It's on Kitchener Street and the three onsite trees that are going to be removed are not the maple. It's a fig tree, a maple, it's a Japanese maple, so slightly different, and the Western red cedar.
Okay, so a large tree is not on this lot and that's why the conversation's happening, but all trees on this lot will be removed?
All trees on this lot will be removed, yes.
Thank you.
We will be working with the applicant to try to retain the fig tree in the northwest corner, but we are looking to retain that one with the removal of the others.
Thanks, Counselor Frye.
Yeah, thanks, Mayor. I guess first off, just not so much on the project but on the process, I'm a little concerned with Mr. Robertson's comments that some of the renderings supplied were inaccurate and then with some of the subsequent follow-up from you guys suggesting that maybe they were. Do we have a protocol around, like a disclaimer for folks to say, well, wait a second, this isn't, I'm just concerned that we get this kind of conflicting information and it can be confusing for us and for people viewing.
We did not receive these renderings prior to the public hearing, so it's difficult for us to confirm the accuracy of renderings. However, you do have as part of this application, actual dimensioned elevation drawings. They are accurate.
Okay, so maybe we can develop a protocol just for future, I think it might be helpful. Just some kind of language to, after a presentation, just say, by the way, folks, this isn't, this is a user-submitted presentation and it may not be accurate. Okay, so on to the actual project, though.
Can I just jump in on that? I was going back and forth with law because I've got some emails from counselors asking about that and we can't really restrict or limit any images that speakers may want to present and we can't validate them either, but that's just kind of, it's their ability to present what they want to.
Okay, fair enough. On figure nine of the presentation, when it talks about market rents in the east end, are those specific to the Britannia Woodland area? How are we calculating what market rents in the east end are? Is that all of east Vancouver? I bring it up in the context of the Grandview Woodlands local area, or the Grandview Woodlands Plan, which identifies Britannia Woodland as some of the lowest rents and below-market rents in the entire area.
Sorry, Counselor Frye, we're just trying to ascertain exactly which table you are referring to, if it's in the presentation or in the council report.
Table nine in the report, I believe it is? It's the rent matrix piece.
And your question was what?
What is the metric by which we are determining average market rent in newer buildings eastside CMHC 2018? Is that all of east Vancouver or is that specific to the Britannia Woodland area?
No, that would be all of east Vancouver. And the footnote number one, that data is from the October 2018 CMHC rental market survey for buildings completed in the year 2008 or later, so the last 10 years, on the east side of Vancouver. There isn't significant, usually significant enough, new development in a kind of neighborhood-by-neighborhood basis to be able to ascertain numbers that would be viable, which is why we have to look at larger aggregations for new build. Because we've had such a deficit over the last two decades of building new housing, we don't even have a kind of robust supply to analyze.
Right, so overlaying that with the Grandview Woodlands Plan, where it talks about Britannia Woodlands having some of the lowest, lowest market rents, okay. And further to that, and again, I'm just trying to look at this within the context of the Grandview Plan, it's talking about a 9,500 population growth and it's expecting about 125 million in CACs and DCLs from that growth in the Grandview area. Are we on track as this is a DCL-waved project and when we talk about some of the delivery we're expecting?
That is a question for.
So you found an uncertain question correct, is about the tracking, the achievement of the Grandview Woodlands Public Benefit Strategy.
Right.
I think certainly that Granville Woodlands has, you know, with rental, with waiving of the DCLs and then with the project economic, the way it is, is not contributing to the coffer of the public benefit strategy, or coffer in terms of money that go to achieve public benefit strategy, but there has been significant investment into the community. The Britannia Community Plan, Community Centre is going through a significant renewal, a lot of investment in the area and, you know, the city.
So I guess, I mean, it specifically targets 125 million in CAC and DCL contributions writ large throughout Grandview and I'm just wondering if, given the, I don't even know what the population growth has been since that time of that plan with new development, are we meeting those objectives?
Well, the plan is a, you know, long-term plan. We're, you know, three-year into the plan and we have three approved rezonings in the area. So, you know, we are starting the tracking and we're at the beginning of delivering all those objectives identified under the PBS, the Public Benefit Strategy. And, you know, we have to focus on the renewal of Britannia Community Centre at this point.
Okay, I see I'm out of time. I had another question, but I'm out of time.
You guys put yourself back on, like Counselor DeGenova has.
Thank you very much. It's a public hearing, so I know that we can ask questions. Hopefully I won't take my full five minutes, but I was also, I was hoping staff might be able to comment on a question that I have regarding heritage revitalization agreements. So if a homeowner comes to public hearing here and talks about wanting to move forward with that, staff wouldn't have considered that in their recommendations because of the fact that we can't assume, or you can't assume, that somebody is going to do that or move forward. I mean, you would respect it if there already was an HRA in place and there was protected heritage, but I just want to make sure you made these decisions moving forward without such applications moving forward before or during the process of this project. So on Kitchener Street, there aren't right now any applications for heritage revitalization agreements?
Yeah, that's correct, sorry. Yeah, that's correct. I think the zoning is RM4, so if the houses, if there are desire to go through the Heritage Action Plan to access some grants, access some incentive or looking at infill, certainly they can look at what's permitted under the RM4 and then, you know, what that, what that the heritage incentive would be appropriate. So right now, there isn't.
And during the process that you go through for public hearing, I mean, after referral to public hearing and in the pre-application stage, well, in the inquiry stage, pre-application stage and the official, the application and referral to public hearing, you have considered any heritage revitalization agreements in the vicinity of the area and you've considered that in your recommendations? Like you have considered those as per the plan states? I just want to make sure that that has been.
Yes, yeah.
Okay, but we can't consider something that might happen in the future that we're not sure about? Is that correct?
Yes, I think, you know, the policy is that this is, this is already an existing RM4 zone and we have policy to protect identified heritage resource and we have options through the Heritage Action Plan to give homeowner resources to conserve heritage if they choose to. And then we also have other policy to incentivize a renewal of existing. And then, we also have other policy to incentivize a renewal of existing rental.
Okay. I was, just to clarify, I was asking, in case it changes the answer, I was asking not about the homes onsite, I was asking regarding the homeowners that said that they didn't have a current heritage revitalization agreement with the city, but that they would consider getting one. But, we, as councillors, are supposed to look at it in its current form right now when making this decision, right?
Yeah.
Thank you. And just one more question regarding the rents. With these rents, been looking at our housing policy overall, in our making-room policy, also in looking at family housing, and the ratio of family housing currently in the Grandview Woodlands area, which I know was something that the Citizens Assembly was very focused on when they came back with their recommendations. Does this help to increase family housing in the neighborhood?
Yes. I don't have the number in front of me right now, but I believe it was over 50% of the units could work for a family, so a two or three-bed.
Thanks. I wasn't asking for exact numbers, but thank you. Thanks very much. That's all.
Great. Thanks, Counselor Frye.
Yeah, thank you. One last question about the, now, am I correct in understanding that originally this project was proposed as six stories, and then it was reduced down to five?
Yes, that's correct.
And, but, and both the six-story and the five-story were applying for the same $670,000 for market-affordable DCL waiver?
Right. I just wanted to clarify that what's presented in the report is a five-story rental project, and then the DCL waiver should, you know, this project go forward is based on a five-story development.
Right. But, was the six-story applying for a DCL waiver at the same amount?
No, it was not.
So, there was no application for a DCL waiver? So, they changed the project?
The DCL waiver came in with the five-story.
Okay.
I think it's just important to understand in the process that applications for rental housing go through multiple iterations with their performer review and due-to-urban analysis, urban design analysis. So, a project, depending on how it's structured, may seek the DCL waiver, may, their project might change fundamentally, they might then choose to not seek the DCL waiver, they might come back. There's often multiple iterations depending on the size of the building, the scale, the types of units, the types of rents they believe they'll be able to get in that area, what the DCL waiver is. So, it does move around. It's not a kind of strict process in that way.
Right. Right. So, just to be clear, there was no DCL waiver applied for on the six-story? It only came about when they moved to a five? That the gist?
Yes. And I don't think we can assume that if they continued with a six, they would have stayed without having a DCL waiver. I think, as a project evolves, it can change.
Okay. I get you. Thank you.
Sit there?
Yeah.
Okay. Thanks. That's it for questions to staff. Counselor DeGenova?
I have, I'd like to move...
Move the motion? Okay.
Move the recommendations with some amended language that I've sent over. Oh, well, the amendment says, the yellow memo, states the yellow memo, so I didn't forget that this time, as is stated in the yellow memo.
Okay.
Unless staff would recommend, and I'm sure they'll jump in, that I understand, that I did send this language over to staff to make sure it was legally sound.
We'd have to do that through a point of information, but...
I already did that. I just wanted to state that because there was some talk across the chamber about...
Okay.
The yellow memo. So, I just wanted to state that. So, thank you very much. I want to start by thanking everyone who came out to speak, regardless of if you were in favor, if you were against, or if you were undecided, but from the neighborhood and you wanted to come and voice your opinion, have your voice heard. Certainly, after a plan, neighborhood or community plan is approved by council, it doesn't mean that consultation with the neighborhood stops. And I think that there's a number of different moving parts, things that we have to consider in the quasi-judicial type of hearing that public hearing is. It's about policy, it's not about changing the policy, it's about the policy before us. We can go back into council and committee to consider different policies. But, this is a policy we have in front of us today. And I remember being here when the policy not started, because it started long before I was here at council, and elected to council. But, I remember being here for the conclusion, and I wasn't 100% convinced, because there were a number of people that said, "It's going to be very difficult to find something that conforms to the plan. It's going to be like a unicorn." So, if this passes tonight, I'm going to have to go and look at the tape and see who said that, but this would be like a unicorn. Seeing more rental in a community that I know, I know families who have moved out of the Granville Woodlands area, I know people who want to live and look for housing there regularly, rental housing. I have heard from our staff that, you know, without other broad scope, I know that our staff work on different types of housing options, that right now, they're looking at inboard bedrooms, borrowed light bedrooms, you're looking at, you know, maximizing density co-housing options, co-ops. We also have affordable homeownership programs that I think will come forward. I know I've said that word a lot. I think lucky number 13 was the number of motions I'd put forward. But, this meets a need for people in that income, in that place. And I can tell you that I don't necessarily think that on paper, especially as we go through a federal election right now, what's affordable here for somebody at $70,000 can be very different across the country. We are, and I remember, and I remind myself, we are one of the three least affordable cities consistently on several lists worldwide. And I think that if we can make a dent and a difference in that affordability, unit by unit, as many council members have stated, and I know that I've seen those election promises that we made continue beyond the election, beyond the campaigns, and into the council chambers as we continue to approve more housing, more family housing. The amendment, I won't belabor the text that I'll go through, I had mentioned that, you know, there's acknowledgement in here that the tenant relocation plan on page three of six of the yellow memo has indeed been met, and it's met city policy, but also that the applicant has gone above and beyond to offer not five units be relocated, but the people in the five units also have the option of the tenant relocation policy. So, I do appreciate that, and for that reason, I will be supporting this project. It's not necessarily an easy decision. I do, I definitely do empathize with those who've come out to say that, you know, this is the first one on the street or in the neighborhood, but we have to start somewhere. And I understand with land assembly, you can't necessarily start at a specific corner and work your way outwards. In fact, that's sometimes how land prices go up. If we, I've seen policy like that in other municipalities, and I think one of the reasons that we don't have a specific policy such as that is because then you're pretty much deemed to have won the lottery if you live on a corner of that plan. And I've seen prices go up. So, I don't necessarily look at it in the context of starting at one side of the plan or another side of the plan. This does conform to the plan, and if it passes, it may just be a unicorn. It actually offers me comfort that it has gone through the urban design panel twice, and I know some projects don't go through the urban design panel twice. But, there has been that oversight. I understand from reading the, you know, extensive comments from staff in the policy report here, that there certainly has been, there have been changes and reform made based on the comments, and this will provide much-needed family housing and a play space for children. So, for those reasons, I will be supporting it.
Thanks very much. And we need a seconder. Thank you, Counselor Domino. On to Counselor Carr, up to five minutes.
Yeah, thank you. First of all, let me thank staff. You answered all my questions very thoroughly. I really appreciate that, the ones I sent. Thank all the speakers for coming. There was very well-informed speakers that brought a lot of information that kept me going back and forth through this whole hearing, right to the very end. And to thank the applicant particularly for modifying, and that's a lot of work, modifying the application to meet community concerns and staff concerns, so, and the UDP, really appreciate that. This is, to me, a tough decision, because it's really focused on some key issues in the city. But, we have to start, as a council always, with, does this comply with the policies in the local area plan? And I would say, generally, it does. There's some exceptions I'm going to raise, but absolutely, it's in line with them. Six stories are allowed here. The exception would be if there is character streetscape cluster, and even though this block is not IDed as a cluster, I've gone there, I've walked it, I've looked at it, and it is. Like, the whole block is the same kind of older homes. The plan does speak beyond IDing clusters in the map. It speaks eloquently to the importance of protecting neighborhood character and discouraging the demolition of pre-1940 homes. The speaker spoke to that as well, especially the fact that many of those homes have been very lovingly restored. This is also part of the contextual fit identified by the Urban Design Panel, and I really appreciate their input on this. The second issue is housing affordability, because this is an application that has waivers for rental because of the affordability. And it is, as many people stated, more affordable than $1 million townhomes, $2 million single-family homes. But, it's expensive rental. A one-bedroom, you need a $70,000 income for the one-bedroom price, if it's 30% of your income. For the three-bedroom, you need a $133,000 income. The City of Vancouver's median household income is $65,000. The median renter income is $43,000. This is not affordable for the people who rent. That's over 50% of the people who live in our city. Our crisis in Vancouver is a crisis of right supply, supply that will meet the majority of Vancouverites, and this doesn't. I'm focused on two key questions in my decision. One is, how important is it to retain neighborhood character in our city? Obviously, if we retain it everywhere, there's no change, and that's ridiculous. That's not going to happen, it's not possible. If we retain it nowhere, we lose our history. We lose the character that defines our city, that attracts people, that makes them love their neighborhoods. So, I think there's got to be some kind of balance. We do have to retain some character, we do have to allow for development. I live in the West End. There's lots of older homes, but they're scattered in three-story walk-ups and 1920s and 1930s apartment buildings and high-rises. And I love the character of the West End. It frustrates me that we haven't, in this city, in the attempt to look at retaining character, developed more of the RT7, RT8 zoning in Kitsalino, which I think has done a good job, more than any other zoning type, to do that. The second question is, how do we get a lot more affordable housing? And I think we have to be honest, we are a city where the vast majority of our housing is developed by the private sector. It's not developed by government money. So, it's up to us as a council to set the requirements and the incentives to get us there. I don't think we have it right yet. Well, we don't have it right, because otherwise, we would have more affordable housing. We don't have affordable housing. So, it's up to us as a council to change those requirements. I was a bit concerned by a staff comment, but it's because I know that this is the truth, that the average income of our renters is going up. That's because we are building more expensive rental housing, and we are going to have to make the change if we are going to deliver housing that people in this city who live and work here can't afford. So, to conclude, lack of neighborhood fit, retaining key neighborhood character, and affordability, these are the two reasons that I am going to vote, in this case, no on this application.
Thanks very much. Counselor Boyle?
Thanks. I have a lot of notes, but it's nine o'clock, and so, I'm just going to be super brief and hope my colleagues might consider the same. I'm in support of this project. I live five blocks away. I've walked the street many, many times. And the thing that stands out to me most, I think, in this decision is just how strongly I believe that renters deserve to live on quiet, calm streets too, and not just on arterials. It's not a perfect project. I too want much more affordable public and social housing everywhere, but for now, I am quite comfortable saying yes and to this, as we keep pushing for more affordability in other projects.
Thank you. Counselor Swanson?
Yeah, thanks to the staff and to all the people who came and spoke, and are still sitting here late at night, and did another night, without getting paid for it like we are. I did a lot of, or some research on the demographics of this area. So, in 1996, 43% of the people in Granville Woodlands were low-income. In 2016, it was 19. So, a huge whack of low-income people have been pushed out. The average rent is $1,172 for a one-bedroom, and the median renter household income is $43,000 a year, like Counselor Carr said. So, that would mean that the average house, median household-income person could afford a rent of $1,075 a month. So, what are we giving this developer? We're giving them the DCL waiver of $600,000, and we're giving them the ability to collect rent from 35 units instead of seven units. And what is the benefit to the community? I tried at the beginning to see if the developer would give us a smidgen of affordability with the 40% for seven tenants, but they declined and are just going for 20%. I have no problem with increasing density in single-family areas if there's a social purpose for it. If this were modular housing, I would say yes. If it were social housing, I would say yes. If it was co-op housing, I would say yes, yes, yes. But, approving this rezoning will be giving incentives to developers to continue doing something that I think this council has to start paying a lot more attention to, and that is gentrifying. When you put expensive rental in a low-rent area, you're increasing property values, you're increasing taxes, and because we don't have vacancy control, you're increasing rents. And that's why the number of low-income people in Granville has declined from 43% to 19%. And those are valuable people. They're workers, they're artists, they're people that care for our children, care for our elders. And I think we have to get a handle on gentrification. It's deeply, deeply connected to our homeless count going up all the time, and so, I'm saying no to this.
Counselor Domino?
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. And I'll start like my colleague, Counselor Boyle. I will probably keep my remarks brief. First of all, I do want to thank all of the individuals and residents who came out, and sorry, I can't see all of you right now, who came and spoke last week, and I know a number of you are back this evening, and those who spoke this evening as well. Also, thanks to the applicant and staff for the presentation of the information that helps inform our decision-making. I know that we all take a lot of time to review the briefing packages, as well as to listen to the comments that come from residents, as well as to review and ask, you know, hopefully thoughtful, constructive questions. I guess a couple of comments off the top. One, in my experience, I'm looking, as my colleagues have indicated, at, in what's coming forward to council, does it conform with our existing community plans, like the Granville Woodlands Plan? Is it meeting policies, complying with policies? And obviously, we have to look at the Granville Woodlands Plan, the pace-of-change policy, the TRP, and make an assessment and judgment based on all the information we receive that there is that compliance, and recognizing there may be diverse perspectives on that. So, that's definitely been a consideration for me this evening. Also noting that I did ask questions last week about the UDP in that process, and it was noted as an advisory, but I do understand the applicant made some changes based on feedback and recommendations there, so I noted that as well. I think, you know, Counselor DeGenova really, I think, addressed well the issue that we continue to grapple with in the city, which is, and was top of mind for voters in the fall, was around housing and housing affordability. And we know from talking to industry and others that there has been an undersupply of purpose-built rental in this city, and across the country, frankly, and there hasn't been an investment there. And so, we are now grappling with that as a municipal... And so we are now grappling with that as a municipality. And so this project does add that supply, you know, 35 units, but that's actually 28 net new units, as well as 50%, I think more than 50% family-sized units. And Councilor DeGenova mentioned also the piece around a play space. And I think that's a really important consideration as we're looking at these, is that we have a shortage and that we need to be looking at more secured market rental. I know there's been questions raised about the neighborhood fit around, I asked some questions last week, around specifically the design and the form of the building. So, and I get the sense that people don't feel it's quite right. And I, you know, and I think sometimes we're striving for perfection, but I think there have been some efforts to make some changes. There was a question raised around sort of the existing neighborhood. There's, I live nearby as well. I have friends who live in the, actually, the Strata building that's mid-block in the next block. And it's a very diverse neighborhood. There's a number of single-family homes, as well as market rentals in Strata. And I think, actually, Councilor Boyle, I had the same perspective. I was thinking about this, is we've had criticism about putting all of our rental buildings on major arterials. And actually, we have existing buildings that are on some of these smaller side streets. And so looking at this, I see that it can work. And I think, just to wrap up there, that wasn't so brief after all. My apologies. Really, I think our job is to really be, I recognize that for those who live nearby, that they might find this challenging, but we have to also look to the future and how are we going to accommodate the projected growth of almost nearly 10,000 people in that area? Where are young people going to live? And while this may not be, these units may not be affordable to everyone. They are affordable to some. And also, I note that staff have noted that there's upwards of 900 units of social housing that's currently being reviewed for that area as well. And so I think we don't want to lose sight of that, that this is one project. There are other proposals coming forward to address social housing, and that will be below market as well. So I am supportive of the proposal. And I'll wrap up there.
Thanks very much. Councilor Frye.
Yeah, thank you. First off, I think that, you know, I don't think this is a blockbuster. I think that the scale is actually pretty reasonable in a design parameters. And I only, you know, I look to the West End and I see, you know, nice heritage houses juxtaposed against larger, and the sky doesn't fall. Similarly, in Strathcona, we see a lot of that. It's, I think that the design itself is quite reasonable, and I think that the architect's response by dropping a story to make it fit better, I think, was well-intentioned. And it does meet the policy objectives of the rent, the DCL waiver. My concern, however, is that it does not meet the policy objectives of the Grandview Woodland Community Plan. And, you know, I look to the Grandview Woodland Area Plan, the opening of the Britannia Woodland subsection, they have a pull quote right on the side, "Affordable housing..." "...dot-dot-dot, managed replacement, minimal displacement." And I don't see that happening. I mean, this is an area with a lot of existing rental already. There's a lot, all throughout that sort of Britannia Woodland area, there's quite a bit of like low-profile, older, affordable rental. There's a large indigenous population in the area. And, you know, the plan actually goes on to say specifically and explicitly, some of the most affordable rental housing in the Grandview Woodland community can be found in the Britannia Woodland sub-area. And goes on to recognize the desirability of this well-situated sub-area for rental housing and set policies that will ensure if, when redevelopment occurs, existing rental units replaced and secured rental units will be introduced. I don't see that this, I think that, and it also talks about a slow, measured, and incremental manner of introducing new rental units, secured rental units. I think that the price point on these rental units is out of sync with the existing neighborhood demographic. And I think we have to tread a lot more carefully with this neighborhood and how we might inadvertently exacerbate displacement through the introduction of higher-market housing and thus propelling market increases. As the developer had indicated, that clearly after the first year, as market turnover, the price can go significantly above what's being suggested here. And I have concerns about what that means for the long term of the viability of housing affordability. So I can't support this project, although I do appreciate the work that's been done on it.
Thanks, Councilor Frye. Just to put myself on the list. Yeah, so in my view, this is our choice. We have a developer who's assembled a bunch of land under a plan that took five years to develop and has strict recommendations and rules have to be complied to. We have an enormous expert staff here, have told us time and time and time again that it meets the plan. And so the choice here is not to leave these homes. It's either for a four-story condo building or what's in front of us. So that's the choice. And we need rental housing more than we need million-and-a-half-dollar condos. So I think at this point, there has been considerable work done in the community to try best to accommodate people's, you know, objections to original designs. It's been through the design panel twice. So I don't see how we, I can't vote against this. I mean, otherwise, we should go back to the drawing board with these plans, because obviously, we're not abiding by our own policies that have taken a very long time to develop. So for me, the choice is four-story condos, which will blow the affordability right out of the window, or we have market rentals, which, remember, two people making minimum wage have an income of $60,000 a year. So when we're talking about units that are, a $70,000 household income can afford, we're very close to getting where we need to go. So I really think, you know, in this case, we should make sure that we get our stats right when we're making these decisions. But for me, I'll be supporting this. Thank you. Councilor Kirby, on.
Thank you. I'll try not to be repetitive of some of the comments that were made earlier, but just to emphasize a few key points. It is council's job to make an evaluation based on whether or not something conforms with the plan. I will agree with some statements that we need to be continually diligent and progressive in trying to move policies forward to achieve greater affordability. However, I will disagree with some of the earlier comments made around not supporting this project on the basis of affordability, because as the mayor pointed out, the other alternative is market condo, which is not affordable. But even the rents on these existing four houses, as we heard from staff, some of them are actually comparable to the rents that we're looking at now in a shared perspective. And so I don't think that saying no to it is going to achieve affordability. I think when you have a vacancy rate that is the lowest in the city of 0.4% versus the 0.8, which is very low across Canada, that Vancouver is suffering, we're not going to get there by saying no. So I disagree with sort of that perspective. Mine is that this is progressive step, not perfect. But it is one where I think we need to show that we are welcoming rental housing in different communities, and that we are welcoming people with different levels of income. And I think that there was a clear perspective difference from some of the speakers we heard tonight, and I'll be straightforward about it, that are currently have the opportunity to be single-family homeowners. And it's tough to get there. And I realize that change is a challenge, and it's hard to adjust to for everybody. But we're also hearing from a lot of people that aren't that, and won't have the opportunity to be. So I think that we have to be guided by our own policy. But I think it will send a very unfortunate signal when rental is very difficult, when the economics of rental are very difficult to build and achieve in this current regulatory environment and this current economic environment. And we see that. And yet, we have an applicant that has actually switched from Strata to rental, which supports a growth. So it's going, we still have a lot to do on the affordability side, but I don't think saying no is going to help achieve affordability. In fact, I think it's going to do the opposite. And so for those reasons, and the fact that it is compliant with the policy, as well as the fact that I really am glad to see a project brought forward, which is the first one that I can recall since being on council, that is not on an arterial, because I don't think it's healthy to put all of your density onto arterials where there is greater and more increasing traffic, either from a safety perspective for kids, in terms of emissions, even as we work to kind of decrease vehicular traffic in the city or move towards electric vehicles, but, or simply noise, and sort of the environment that people are living in. So I think that's also a very compelling point, in addition to the sort of the legal framework within which council has to make a decision. So for those reasons, I will support it. Thank you.
You, Councilor Weep.
Yeah, this is difficult, because I know I've got friends that are living in the houses and came and spoke. And I know that this is, when you look at the model, the contextual fit is difficult. However, we do need rental housing in non-arterial roads. We do need places that have family housing with amenity space on the roof, following the new eco-plan, with zero-emission-type building. I mean, when you look at the building and what it's offering, this is a home that I know a lot of people that would have left Vancouver would have loved to live in. And it's something that I think in the future, we need to recognize, that a beautiful family building in an area that's really supportive, and I hope the neighbors really get inclusive and welcome these people to their neighborhood. I think having buildings with zero alleys that creates those backyard connections. I recognize this is a difficult building, and the slopes and scale are going to make it difficult on the neighbors. It's great to hear that we're going to try to work on the trees and the urban forest surrounding it to really make it blend in. It's great to hear from staff that there's still work to be done on the character fit, and there's still work to be done to really make sure that this fits in with the neighborhood. But if it's going to be a four-story condo or a five-story rental building, I think what's been done here with a green roof and amenity space, I will be supporting it. And I look forward to working throughout the citywide plan and future policies to ensure that we can make more decisions in the future that bring more people together and be less divisive than this project.
Okay, great. Thanks very much. I don't have anybody else on the list, so we will, we'll move to the vote.
Waiting for Councilor Dominado and Councilor, there we go. So that has passed with Councilors Swanson, Frye, and Carr in opposition. Thank you very much, council. We are finished our business for this evening, so I guess we move to adjourn. Thanks very much. So I have movement. Thank you. Councilor DeGenova, Secretary of Council Carr, all in favor? Any opposed? It's passed. Thanks very much. We're adjourned.